Let's call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Patel will be marked absent.
Here she is, here she is. Yay!
Vice Chair Oblea?
Here.
Chair Fang will be marked absent.
We're going to adjourn this meeting for 30 seconds. Let's call this meeting back into order. Would you please all stand for the pledge of allegiance? Please join me. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item number three, public comments. This is a time when any member of the public may address the commission on an item within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time that the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Is there anybody, any comment cards?
No, sir.
Okay, so I read all that for nothing. Let's move on. Item number four, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, sir, not from staff.
Okay.
Excuse me, Vice Chairperson Oblea, I would like to add an introduction of our Assistant City Manager.
Okay. That'd be nice.
And Stephanie Vasquez, our Deputy City Clerk.
Okay.
Would that be all right with you, sir?
Sure. Yeah. Go right ahead.
I'd like to introduce you to the Assistant City Manager, Brian Jones. Actually, today is his one-month anniversary with the City of Eastvale.
Wow! It's been that long since we've met last, I guess.
Brian has nearly 20 years of experience in both public and private sector, with more than a decade serving in the local public sector in leadership positions. He has led cutting-edge land use and transportation infrastructure projects throughout California and North America. He's a results-oriented certified planner and a professional engineer. He's led land use projects from large-scale residential developments, office campuses, industrial parks, transit-oriented development, downtown revitalization, and mixed-use projects. Brian has a master's degree in public administration from Norwich University focused on leadership and sustainable financial strategies, as well as a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from UC Davis with a minor in communications. He's passionate about identifying ways to help move and connect people and businesses and communities so that they can all thrive. Brian is married to his wife Sheri of 10 years, and they have two children and three black labs. So we're very excited to have Brian join the Eastvale family if you would give him a warm welcome, and he will be helping out from, you know, moving forward, so you will see him from time to time at your planning commission meetings.
Welcome, Mr. Jones.
I'd also like to share with the commission that we have Stephanie Vasquez, she's at the end. She is our new Deputy City Clerk. Stephanie was born and raised in the city of Corona, so we did steal her from the city of Corona. She previously worked for the city of Corona for the last 10 years in multiple departments, including the City Clerk's Office, the City Manager's Office, Redevelopment Agency, Administrative Services, and most recently, the Department of Water and Power. Stephanie joins Eastvale, as I said, as our Deputy City Clerk, and she brings a wealth of knowledge in records management and customer service. With Eastvale, Stephanie will be responsible for revamping the city's records management program, assisting with public records requests, as well as assisting the City Clerk's Office with ongoing projects to increase transparency in the community. Stephanie obtained her bachelor's degree in business administration from California Baptist University, so we have another Lancer in the house, and she is a California Notary Public. She looks forward to working with the city of Eastvale and joining the team and contributing to our organization. So again, we're very honored to have Stephanie on board and a new member of the Eastvale family.
Welcome, Ms. Vasquez. Welcome all.
Thank you.
So let's move on. Item five, the consent calendar. Do we have any comments or questions?
Do I make a motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
I don't know that I can vote because I wasn't here at the last meeting, so based on the minutes, should I abstain? I'll abstain.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you. Let's go on. Item six, public hearing, 6.1, project number PLN 18-20007. The Ranch Warehouse, maybe planning, it's in Planning Area 3. Do we have a presentation?
We do. Mr. Chair, Kanika Kith, the project planner for that, is here tonight, and she will give the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Good evening, Commissioner. I can't see the presentation. Thank you, Eric. The applicant? The original developer of the Ranch Summit is requesting approval of a major development review to build a warehouse building of approximately 88,000 square feet in, at the ranch. Here's a site plan showing where the proposed building is located in context to the rest of the development that's out there right now. These are the buildings that are in construction or have been completed, and this is the project site where the new warehouse building will be located. Here's a site plan of the warehouse building. To the south of the building is Limonite Avenue, and here are the two internal street for the ranch. Here's the architectural elevation that's being proposed, showing all four elevation. The applicant had designed the building to meet the design standard in the ranch-specific plan. Various building materials of concrete element and colors of gray tones are proposed that are consistent with other nearby buildings in the development. Here is a perspective drawing showing the southeast corner of the building. This is the office at the south end of the building. As you can see here, there's no trees along this building, and later on in the presentation, I will talk about why there's no trees shown in this elevation drawing. Here's an elevation showing the northeast corner, the office at the north end of the building. Here is an elevation showing the southwest corner of the building. This elevation will be visible from Limonite Avenue for people going east. The applicant had designed the corner to add windows here to improve this corner elevation. In this drawing, I don't know if you can see it, but here is a truck-loading area in the back of the building. The applicant is proposing to have a nine-foot-high wall to screen the truck-loading area. Here is a drawing showing the nine-foot-high green wall and the truck-loading area behind it. A condition is included in the conditions of approval in the agenda packet, requesting the applicant to provide a revised site plan that shows a five-foot-wide landscape area so that landscape can be planted in front of the wall to illustrate something like this. So early on, I mentioned why there's no trees along the south elevation of that southeast corner of the building. And the reason why is because the project is located within the Chino Airport Safety Zone, and the project is required to provide certain amount of open space for emergency aircraft landing. The applicant is proposing to use the truckyard area for this purpose and the parking field between the building and Limonite. ALUG, the airport land use commission, restricts any planting of trees higher than four feet, or any structure higher than four feet. That's the reason why there's no trees planted alongside this building, and there will be no trees inside this parking lot. But trees will be planted along Limonite, and shrubs will also be planted along Limonite outside of the open space area to screen the parking. And the shrub can go up to three feet along the street, and it can go up to four feet if it's planted adjacent to the building. Here are some conditions that's being recommended for landscape. One is to make sure that the landscape width around the building is at least five feet wide, two, accommodate adequate spacing for planting trees. Another one is to make sure that the parking area will be screened for public view or reduce its visibility. And three is to require landscape around this green wall. Here is a circulation plan showing that both offices will have pedestrian access to the sidewalk on Limonite and the two internal street. And the green color here shows the gate to the truck-loading area. A condition is included to require the applicant to install signage to inform both pedestrian and truck drivers of the potential conflict when they cross this driveway. Bicycle parking and employee break area will be provided. Here's some illustration showing the outdoor employee area. The proposed warehouse development is covered in the EIR and a denim that was prepared for the project that was approved by the city council back in 2015. Notices were sent out to property owners within 600-foot radius of the project site. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project subject to the conditions of approval provided in the agenda packet. Staff is available to answer any question from the commission.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for staff? Commissioners?
I really, I really just have one is the traffic. What's gonna, on ADT is, obviously Limonite isn't there yet, so we don't know overall, but as far as the access point going into the whole area, I'm assuming we've looked at traffic count and it's, this size of a building's not gonna make any excessive additional amount of congestion?
Good evening, Commissioners. The access to this has been included as part of the overall plan, so the entire specific plant area has always been approved as one project. The fact that this building came at a different phase is because the ownership issue, and the access now, we're still struggling with the access with the city of Chino because there's one or two more developers in Chino that are also working in these intersections. To the west, there's a service regions. To the north, there's Watson Development. So right now, even though the intersection of Kimball and, slash, Limonite and Hamner, I'm sorry, and Helman is a signalized intersection, we don't have the signal installed there yet. And right now, the truck is going to go, take the access through delineators. You go north on Hamner, you make a right turn onto the, onto the site, onto the, this project, and also the rest of the building in the back, in the background, which belongs to First Industrial. So I hope I answered the questions. And then the other question that we have on the summit development there, it's actually completed by this development, but yet, because of the issue that we have with Chino that we're still trying to hash out, we don't have that full access there. That access also has to be signaledized in the future. They call it summit and helmen. I hope that answered the questions. As far as the truck traffic, all those been counted, and the volume is counted as part of the overall developments.
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, so kind of following up on that. So I'm just wondering, did we receive any comments from, official comments from Chino? Because if I were Chino, I would have significant issues with this because of all this truck traffic that's using their road to access the site instead of Limonite connecting to Eastvale.
We haven't received anything from Chino.
Okay.
In a minute, you could, in a minute.
So I have a question.
Go ahead. Commissioner?
Can you think, can you bring up the slide where it shows the southeast corner where Limonite will pass by? Which one was the one that you said we did improvements with the windows?
That one.
That's the one that will be adjacent to, what street is gonna be the main street right there?
Limonite.
Limonite. So my concern is, is that we put a lot of emphasis on every business that our, that our residents have to drive by and commercial stuff. The backsides of restaurants, we've really made it to where either it's hidden by a privacy wall or vegetation somehow. So if this is gonna be a real travel thoroughfare someday, even if it's not today, is there more that we should argue for on that corner there to make it look more business-like, like the rest of the building? Because someday, that's where the traffic's gonna go by, and it'll be a lot of traffic. So that's my question to staff is, you know, I don't want to change what we've already asked for on a lot of businesses prior to this, saying that you need to make it look more occupied rather than just flat walls.
This elevation has been improved from what was submitted, and staff did have some recommended changes to this corner, but in discussion with the applicant, those recommended changes were not doable because of the building floor plan. Maybe the applicant and his architect can talk more about that. The architect is also here this evening to address that issue.
Okay, I'll wait.
I also have that same concern, concerned also that that's going to butt up to the commercial development that's to the west of that, and that will be a major viewpoint. Maybe some like awnings that are on the, the other ends of the buildings, you know, you know, just put some awning on there or something, something to make it look like it's a, it's not the back of a building or something like that. But that's my concern also. At this time, we should open the public hearing. Are we ready for the public hearing?
Yep.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Do we want to hear from the applicant at this time? Come on up. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brian Gentra. I represent Summit of Dalton. First of all, I'd like to thank you Commissioners for asking to ask the plan for the Ranching Circle. It's finally coming into meeting, and it's very rewarding to see that happen here before I, I think, the first six buildings from First Industrial will be very successful, will fall on their heels. I also want to thank Kanika. She's been very focused and dedicated to the process of her plan. Total pro. I really, really appreciate that. And just one comment on the traffic section. So remember, the overall EIR master plan will approve when the original project will approve. And just by the way of background, this plan here had a block entitlement for 120,000 feet, and now we're coming in at 88,500 feet. Why is that? Well, in all truthfulness, it's because the site building conforms more to a smaller building. Could we have jammed a little bit more building on the site? Possibly, but that wasn't what we're trying to accomplish here. But I did want to make that point, that there was a lot of thought and effort, including getting Chino to approve all of our traffic measures when this project was originally put on the drawing boards. So there shouldn't be any money pouring toward that from now on any future projects, provided again, that we stay within the envelope of block entitlements that we achieved first time. So thank you again to the city, we appreciate it. And now, I'd like again to David, our architect, to talk about that key corner and address one of your comments.
Again, give us your name and who you're with.
David and David with Architects Orange in the Orange Shrub and Circle. We're happy to be here. We designed the ranch right behind this project. And looking at this, on that corner, on the glass that we added originally, that was reveals the paint, but looking at now, because of the visibility, I think the glass will be a very positive addition to that corner because of the fact that you're gonna see it. And I would recommend, I concur on this next one. I think that if we developed a metal awning that is similar to the architecture that we have on the east side of the building, those entries, I think it not only adds a pop-up, but it creates a shadow line in the west elevation. So in my opinion, I think we do a lot to create a projection on that wall. That wall's not very big, but it, it, glasses that have the awning with all that glitz and hair.
I agree. So you're in agreement with us as far as adding an awning?
Yes, yeah. But we could work with planning to come up with a design scheme and present that on a random.
Eric, did you, did you catch that?
Yeah, Kanika, can you put the southeast corner up, please? So, the same kind of thing there, David, that we're seeing in this one, we put on the southwest corner?
Right, so then, so these awnings you see here, they pop out about four feet, and they're quite extensive. So what we would do is we'd take that awning and put it above the first level of glass to create a shadow line that kind of breaks up that mass.
Do you want it to wrap around the corner like this, or would you?
Well, I don't think we should because the architecture on the south side has its own image. I would just, I would pop it out right on that west wall where the sun is hitting around that image and create a shadow over there. Because, look, because it's, it's not an entry per se. It is a design on, but if you start putting too much, it looks like an entry and people start going to that corner into the building. So we don't wanna, I don't want to create too much awning scale.
I think that's clear to us, sir, if that's acceptable to the commission?
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but if there's no doors there, they're, they're not gonna try to walk into the side of the building. The fact that if you had glass on top, like that other corner, that's quite, that's, that's really beautiful on the other corner. So if we could get something similar to that, besides just the awning, I think that would really set it off as people are driving by, not necessarily gonna try to walk in. You don't need to put the glass on the bottom, but the glass around the corner like that is really nice, and it really sets the building off like that. And I'm not saying I have to have it, I'm just saying that, you know, if it's something that residents are gonna drive by more so than the sides that really are beautiful, it doesn't do much good.
I would say that I'm not opposed to that. Let's see if we can come up with something that speaks to what you're looking for and try to capture that look. I don't think it'll be quite as expensive as what we have on the northeast corner, but maybe we can find kind of how to meet.
I agree with that. Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I guess I'm of a different opinion. I almost think there's too much glass. That's facing west, and it's gonna face another building directly west of it. And where I see the west in Southern California, that glass, I mean, my, my thought is, is that gonna be more of a distraction because of how the sun's gonna hit it and, and the glare? So I'm almost thinking less glass, not more, because that's, that's not what people are gonna drive by directly. They'll see it facing west, correct? It's, it's the, where those cars are parked, that's actually directly on Limonite.
Right.
So where that glass is, that's not what people are gonna drive by. That's what's gonna be facing the neighbor, and that's directly west.
That's why you wanted it more towards the corner.
That's why I said, put it towards the corner more.
Oh, you're saying put the glass altogether more towards the corner?
Like the other side.
Is there a logistical reason you need it for light into the building?
No, it's for aesthetics.
It's strictly, the light is strictly aesthetics?
Yes. It's the part of the general plan and the zoning code that the, anything on the, facing a major roadway has to look like.
But that's not facing a major roadway. That's what I'm saying. It's facing the parking lot.
Well, that's why.
Am I, am I missing something?
I think.
Brian, can you approach, please?
So the idea was to take that southwest corner pod and add a little bit of architectural enhancement.
Yes.
That is facing west, and as people drive by that at a fairly brisk speed, they probably won't appreciate that glass line as much as they would appreciate one that comes out of the corner of the building, which is what you're suggesting. I don't think it'll ever happen to a functional entry because that's not the place that you put the entry to build for variety reasons, if I don't worry about it. But I think the idea of trying to, I think, wrap the corner of the building with some glass would accomplish, I think, what you're looking for, which is to make that corner of the building look just a little more professional. And who knows, maybe someday it does turn into some kind of secondary area, I'm not sure if they can have that, but I get that thought. And I think if we move in that direction, having that glass on the west side of the building might not be as important as having better articulation of the glass grabbing the corner. So I think we can come up with something I'd like to work with planning and try to address your concerns, get it perfect in a way that works for the building and works for you as well, as that.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public?
No, sir.
No cards? Okay, then, without any other comments, we're gonna close public hearing. Do we have any final discussions? Commissioner Lee?
So, are we due comments now?
Yes.
Okay. So one, one minor thing that I wanna, it's a pet peeve of mine, is when we're putting in sidewalks, we want to make sure that they're not meandering, that they're straight, that if you're putting on a sidewalk, they should be functional. You know, if you want a person to go from point A to point B, they don't want to meander through, to their destination. So we want to make sure that the sidewalks are functioning that way, so it needs to be straight. That's, that's the comment that I have.
Commissioner Patel?
Commissioner Charles?
I'm good.
I disagree with you, Commissioner Lee. I, I think a meandering sidewalk looks very nice right there, especially along the street. Many, any men, any other connecting sidewalks between buildings might be straight, but I think a nice meandering sidewalk along the street is a very nice addition, so I, just my opinion.
So do we have, can we entertain a motion to approve the major development review?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, as stated, from the planning department with the addition of improvements to the southwest corner?
Second.
Okay.
On that motion, I would say, conditions of the southwest corner subject to approval by the direct planning director.
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Very good. Okay, let's go on to, congratulations, good luck. 6.2. Al's Corner, general plan amendment.
Okay, I need to depart at this time. I received a notice that I am within 600 feet of this. So I will run outside, and you guys can holler when you're done.
Okay. We'll give you a few minutes.
So Mr. Vice Chair, while Commissioner Charleston leaves the room, I'll just note that Kanika Kith, the planner for this project, is here, and she will again give the presentation tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
The project that's before you right now is a request from the city for a general plan amendment to change the land use of Al's Corner from residential to commercial. Here's the project site, it's on the southwest corner of Hamner Avenue and Riverboat. It's the vacant parcel that's north of fire station, of the fire station on Hamner Avenue. I'm sorry, I think my, oh, sorry, there it goes. Sorry. Um, the, I'm sorry, hold on.
There it is.
We need a new battery for our clicker. All right, back to the presentation. Here's an image showing the site before, current condition right now, back in 2009. The site is called Al's Corner because there used to be a bar here and the owner's name is Al, so we call it Al's Corner now. And here's a project site as it is right now, it's vacant and it's currently owned by the city. The request for a general plan amendment is shown here, changing it from residential to commercial. So here's a list, here's a list explaining why the site is appropriate to be commercial. But the main reason for the general plan amendment this evening is mainly a cleanup for the inconsistency between the general plan and zoning. This is one of the sites that the city inherited from the county where the zoning is not consistent with the general plan. In this case, the site is zoned for commercial, but general plan is for residential. And keep in mind that the general plan is a policy document showing that what's the city vision for the site. And having the site shown as residential could mean that the city envisioned this to be residential, which is not the case. Since the city incorporated 2010, the city had always envisioned the site to continue for a commercial development. And there are here other reasons why it should be kept as commercial. And that is that having a commercial development dislocation could provide service to the surrounding residential community. And because of its location on a main thoroughfare on Hamner Avenue between the 60 and the 91, it could pick up bypass traffic and depending on the use that will go on the site, it can also generate sell tack revenue for the city from the bypass traffic. And the commercial use will also generate job opportunities for the city. For these, an EIR was prepared for this project. This project was reviewed in the EIR that was also prepared for the next project on your agenda this evening called the Lewis Retail Center. In that, the EIR is still in public review right now and it will be presented to the city council for consideration. The planning commission does not need to make any recommendations for the EIR at this meeting. The EIR identified fine environmental issues for both Al's Corner and the next, and the Lewis Retail project. But as you can see here on the table, there are only four issues that are transportation, traffic, air quality, greenhouse gas, and noise. These are the only four issues that have been identified as significant and unavoidable for Al's Corner for the proposed general plan amendment. Public notices were sent out to property owners within a 600-foot radius of the project site and also commercial tenants within that radius. For the reason that staff explained earlier, staff recommended that the planning commission recognize approval of the general plan amendment to city council. Staff is available to answer any question from the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any questions for staff? Commissioner Lee?
I just have one.
Commissioner Patel?
Is, do we believe this is the last of the correction that's needed based on what we inherited from the county? Or do we still, how many more issues are out there that what the county had and what was supposed to happen? I mean, are we pretty close to the end after eight years?
This is just one of the few sites that, where the zoning and the general plans are not consistent. There are a few other properties in the city.
I mean, I know the, over by the high school, the Van, yes, Van Lewin. That one where the county had the zoning and we had to go back and do that. So are we pretty much have gone through most of these and we're pretty much finally to the zoning that we approved years ago?
Well, I could be wrong, but I believe this is the last where the general plan doesn't reflect the zoning that we want to have on the site.
Okay.
So there are other places in town where we have general plan, which is okay, and the zoning isn't in place and that's more common. This one, I can't actually explain how the county ended up with zoning that doesn't match the general plan, that's.
Okay. Okay, good.
We'll leave that there.
Good, good progress, thank you.
I have no questions for staff, so at this time we will open public, the public hearing is now open. Do we have any comment cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, so no one wants to comment on this item, so then we will close public hearing. Good hearing is now closed. Do we have any, anybody else want to talk about this? Do we have any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion to move, approve staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, very good. Can we get Commissioner Charleston back in the room?
Oh, yeah, last time we forgot to bring in.
So while Jason is doing that, I'll just note for the commission and the audience that we've tentatively scheduled this for a public hearing at the city council on June 13th.
June 13th?
13th, which is the first council meeting in June and that meets our required quarterly timing for general plan amendments.
Can you say that again for quarterly plan amendments?
Yeah, we consider amendments to the general plan quarterly.
Okay.
So March, June, September, December.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on to item 6.3. Lewis Retail Center at the former Papa Lewis Plant Nursery. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Mr. Vice Chair, we're going to actually tag team on this one a little bit. I'm going to do the first part and then Kanika's going to take over and then I'll wrap up at the end.
All right, very good.
Okay, well, let's first of all get started by just listing out all the various approvals. It's, there's a lot of paperwork associated with the project, which at its heart is really not that complicated, but let's just kind of go through all the applications. So we start off with another general plan amendment and that's to change the designation of the site from residential to commercial. There is a rezoning to go along with that, to replace the existing zoning, which is a holdover again from the county, to commercial zoning that matches what they want to build. There is a tentative parcel map to subdivide the site into parcels for retail development. Then we get into, and that's just kind of the land use and the mapping component of it. Then there's the major development review, which in this case is looking at several retail buildings. We'll get into those in a little more detail in Kanika's portion of the presentation. There's landscaping, there's street improvements, grading, et cetera, on most of the site. Now, what you're seeing before you tonight is not the entire site. There are several, four parcels basically, which are not proposed to be developed with this set of approvals. You will be seeing them in the future. One of those parcels is a parcel which the city is in agreement with Lewis, the developer here, to purchase and ultimately build a civic center complex on. So you'll see that and then some other uses which we can talk about more in the future. Once we have the buildings done with then, at least in terms of presentation tonight, there are several use permits. So the first is a proposed use permit for the sale of alcohol at a gas station, which will come in at a future time. That's one of those things that's not on your agenda tonight. That particular item is not ready for tonight's meeting. It was noticed with all of this. We determined after we sent the notice out that we didn't have enough time to get that ready for you. So our recommendation on that particular use permit is to continue it to your meeting of the 20th of June. Then we get back into products, there are parts of the project that we are ready to talk about. So the second conditional use permit is for a future drive-through restaurant on what's called Pad Two, on parcel number two of the project. That's really very similar to what we did with the Esau Marketplace, where you approved drive-throughs conceptually, subject to the requirement that they come back for development review, stacking, queuing, et cetera. Then we have a use permit for operation of the drive-through for a Starbucks coffee shop on Pad Three, which is also on parcel three. And then a conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol in a proposed full-service sit-down restaurant on Pad Four, which is currently proposed to be a hero's restaurant like the one in downtown Riverside. And as we note here, there was one of those conditional use permits not ready for review tonight. So here's the project site. My high school geometry fails me, so I can't tell you if that's a trapezoid or what, but that's the site. Just a few things to note about here, so if you're familiar with this, this is Hamner Avenue. This is Schleisman coming into it. 15 freeway over here, ultimately, it is city policy that there will be an interchange here. So part of what you'll see if you look at the map and the development plans is a future extension of Schleisman Road through the site. It initially gets built at less than its full width because we don't need a road going all the way through, but we get the full right-of-way improvements or right-of-way dedication and in the package, and Kanika will go through that. We show plans for how it would look in that interim condition and then ultimately when the roads widened. Right across the street over here is the 99 Cent Store, our arrow's a little bit out of date, but 99 Cent Store is right here. That's Fire Station 27, that's New Day Church, and this down here is the Silver Lakes Sports Complex. So the southern boundary of this site is also the city limit line between us and Norco. So let's go over the general plan amendment and the change of zone. As we mentioned, we're changing that from residential to retail. The change of zone matches that. What we inherited from the county was a combination of rural residential, which is kind of the light green here, and water course zoning. It's not in a floodplain, so I don't know why they applied that zoning, but the proposal is to replace that all with a C1 commercial zone. So, you know, much like the prior presentation, many of the same reasons here. Putting retail uses on the site as opposed to housing is going to increase shopping opportunities. It increases our retail, our commercial retail land use, which is one of our least represented land use categories in the city and that's important to us because we get sales tax generation off of those. And it promotes several policies in the general plan that encourage increased, expanded non-residential development and local employment opportunities. Not much to say about this, this is the tentative parcel map, but just again to highlight the fact that it shows the future or the dedication of Schleisman Road all the way through the site over here to the edge. At that point, you get into the city of Norco and they have reserved the top 100 feet of Silver Lakes complex for a roadway to get out to the, out to the I-15. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kanika, who will go through the major development review and talk to you about the buildings, the landscaping, et cetera.
Thank you. So as Mr. Norris mentioned earlier, this doesn't include the entire project. For my part of the presentation, I will talk about the elevation and the architectural design for the four buildings as shown on the site plan. This is for the Starbucks building, Pad Three. Here is for full-service sit-down restaurant known as Pad Four. And these are the two retail buildings, multi-tenant retail buildings. Here is the size of each of the building that's being proposed. My first part, I'll talk about the architectural design for the Starbucks building. Overall, staff feel that their proposed buildings, all their proposed buildings, has been designed with high quality and articulation to provide visual interest. The building has been designed with a modern contemporary architectural style, featuring flat roof, projecting metal canopies, and varying building material. Here is an elevation for the post-Starbucks building. Staff feel that the elevations as proposed, the architectural style and elevation proposed meets the design standard, but staff include a condition for the oven to improve the north elevation that's outlined here in red. This above elevation here, staff have several discussion with oven about improving this elevation and it has been improved from what was originally submitted, but staff feel that something else could be done to improve this elevation. And here's another elevation of the Starbucks building, also outlined here in red is the portion of the elevation that staff is looking for additional improvement and that has been included as a conditions of approval. Here's a rendering showing how the building will look like. And again, this is the area, this is the elevation that has been conditioned to be improved. This elevation is the north elevation, I'm sorry, let me go back, that's the north elevation and the other elevation that staff asking for improvement is the east elevation that would be visible along the drive aisles in the retail center. The next building is for the full-service sit-down restaurant. Here's the proposed elevation. Staff feel like this building has been designed very nicely and it's going to sit on the corner of the project site for people coming into Eastville. That would be the south elevation. I'm not sure if you can see, but this is the south elevation right here. So this is the elevation that will be visible from traffic heading north on Hamner Avenue. And oven has designed this rear elevation by adding additional glass with awnings to improve the elevation. Here's a rendering showing how it looked like. And here's the elevation that will be visible from Hamner, heading north. The next one staff will talk about is the multi-tenant building for Pad Seven. This is the north elevation of the building, which is the back of the building that will be adjacent to the residential to the north. The south elevation is the storefront. And here are the east and west elevation. Here's a rendering showing the two pad building, showing, as you can see the site plan, both Pad Seven and Pad Eight will be side by side and a plaza has been created between the two. Oops, sorry. And here's rendering showing the front of the store and the side. The next will be Pad Eight, which is designed to be very similar to the Pad Seven multi-tenant building. Again, the north elevation, the elevation that will be visible to the residential. Because of the site, the grading of the site, this elevation would not be very visible to a residential. If any, oven can talk more about that north elevation for these two pad buildings. But oven did work with staff in improving the other elevation to meet the design standard for the city. Here's the east and west elevation. Click it doesn't work again. Let me go back to where I was at earlier, and here's a rendering showing the multi-tenant building. And here's the proposed landscape. So this green area landscape is all going to be hydroseed with irrigation. And here's a site for the future civic center that will be irrigated until a development comes in. Also, this site here will also be irrigated with hydroseed. As part of this project, the project is conditioned to provide permanent landscaping along this slope, and Louis will be putting that in. Here's the pedestrian access within the retail. Sorry, you can't really see this, but the red line is showing all the pedestrian access connecting to the sidewalk and along here, and then within the retail center that connects from the sidewalk on Schleiseman to the full sit-down restaurant and to Starbucks. When Pad Two and Pad One be developed, additional pedestrian access will be provided for internal circulation. Also, staff would like to point out here, here's a pedestrian connection that's being proposed that will be put in as phase one that will connect to the future development here. Here's a graphic showing the interim and ultimate design for Schleiseman. As part of this project phase one, this roadway design will go in, and you see this on the site plan and the landscape plan. When the project further down the line, Schleiseman will be developed to the ultimate condition where it will connect to the Fifteenth Freeway further east. The oven has provide more than required parking for the retail center. If you can see here, here is the restaurant building. The oven is providing a lot more than what's required in our zoning code, and that's because of the restaurant, because of the request from the restaurant operator to have a much higher standard than what's in our zoning code. And here are a list of the conditional use permit that's being requested for this project. Mr. Norris will take over this part. I don't think the clicker is working.
All right, thank you, Kanika. Yeah, so let's go through the use permits, and again, the first one on Pad One. So when this is heard, it will be a request for off-site alcohol sales, which means again, it's a package store where purchasing alcohol and taking it home.
Remy, temporary technical difficulties.
Do you want us to recess for a few minutes, or do you got it?
Yeah, you want to give us a couple of minutes?
Sure.
And we'll get this fixed.
Then we'll recess for five minutes. Okay, let's call this meeting back to order. You may continue with your presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So again, we're starting off with the first requested conditional use permit for off-site alcohol sales, and again, this is requested by staff to be continued to your meeting of June 20th. We just simply did not have time to get this ready for you tonight. The second use permit is on Pad Two, parcel two, and as I mentioned earlier, this is really similar to what we've done in other instances. We did this with the Walmart project and the ESO Marketplace. They don't have a tenant for that pad yet. They would like to have a conditional use permit approved, at least conceptually, to be able to market it to those users. So very similar to what we did with ESO Marketplace and Walmart, there are conditions of approval that require them to come back to the commission with a development plan review, stacking studies and so on, and then the typical conditions about not obstructing...
Can I break in?
Yes, go ahead.
So they're not necessarily going to have a drive-through at that pad, but they want the option to be able to allow a drive-through at that pad?
I think that's fair to say. You can ask the applicant. I would expect they will probably come in with a drive-through, but having a use permit does not require them to have a drive-through, yes.
Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So again, you know, the condition of approval here require them to come back here with a major development review, so very similar process that we just went through recently with Mcgillis Jr. and Poyo Loco. The next conditional use permit is on Pad Three, and as Kanika mentioned, that's the proposed Starbucks drive-through. So we just have a couple of slides here that show basically how their, how vehicles will get into the project. Try not to blow up everything by press. Our pointer still works. So there'd be two ways to get into this part of the project. There's a right-in, right-out driveway down here, and then, of course, the full signalized intersection up on Hamner, so you'll have your choice of either coming in through here or coming up either along Schleiseman or up Hamner, making that kind of U-turn. Now, as you know, we require stacking studies with all these, and fortunately, we just did a Starbucks, and we have a stacking study that looked at the other two Starbucks in town. As you recall, from the Starbucks up in the Goodman Center, that study said we need 12 cars' worth of stacking for a peak hour, and they have designed the stacking here to do that. So this is one where we have the amount of stacking that we say we, that we anticipate is going to be required. And then there's the other standard conditions that we impose on these about not affecting traffic flow, et cetera, in the parking lot. And then we get to the last conditional use permit for tonight, and that is for the restaurant on Pad Four. They are applying for a conditional use permit to enable themselves to go to the state and get a Type 47 liquor license for beer, wine, and distilled spirits. They plan to serve that inside the main restaurant, obviously, and in that enclosed outdoor patio at the east end of the building. So that would be their license premise. These are their proposed hours of operation. There's a condition in here which we've consistently imposed on other onsite alcohol sales that requires them to stop serving alcohol an hour before they close. So these are the hours that they're currently proposing. Whatever the hours are, they would have to stop serving alcohol an hour before they close, and certainly within the time limits that they have to stop serving per state law. So the applicant, or Louis is here tonight, they disagree a little bit with that condition, but we've discussed that with the police department, and staff remains firm in our recommendation to you to apply that condition as written. Just really quickly, these are the other, well, there's only one other onsite alcohol sales currently occurring anywhere in the vicinity, and that's down at the Field House Restaurant down here in the Silver Lakes Soccer Complex. So that concludes all of the development, applications, maps, et cetera, conditional use permits. I know we went through that rather quickly, but if you want to dive into the details on anything, please feel free to ask. In terms of SEQA, we do, we had, as Kanika mentioned, an environmental impact report prepared, which is currently under review, or currently in the public review process. So for anybody who wants to comment on that, you have until, it's actually Tuesday, the 22nd, not Monday, it is Tuesday, the 22nd is the deadline to get comments to us. We'll respond to all those and prepare a final EIR for the city council. The commission doesn't need to take action on the document, but you do have it in your package, and if you have questions about any of the impacts, we'll try and field those questions, or Mr. Ross Geller, who was the primary author of that document, is also here to respond to your questions. As Kanika mentioned, for the Al's Corner project, there are basically nine topical areas looked at in the environmental impact report, and we'll focus over here on the far right-hand column. These are the four significant unavoidable impacts that were identified in that, in the EIR for this component of the project. So the Al's Corner component had its own significant unavoidable impacts. This one does as well. As we do with all projects like this, we sent 425 notices out, actually, and these went out actually a thousand feet from the alcohol sales per our code. 417 property owners, commercial tenants, and the adjacent cities of Norco, Corona, River Valley all got notices. And we do have some comments that came in via email that were on your dais tonight, so you've got those. Staff's recommendation, we'll just kind of go through that really quickly, is basically approval of all the actions in front of you tonight. We have spent a lot of time working with the applicant on the project. We feel it's in a form that you can recommend approval. So approval of the general plan amendment, the change of zone, the parcel map, the development plan review, the conditional use permit for the future drive-through on that Pad Two, conditional use permit for the Starbucks drive-through on Pad Three, and the conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol in the restaurant on Pad Four. The other conditional use permit, I'll just remind one more time, is not on your agenda, is on your agenda tonight. We recommend that you continue that to a future meeting. And with that, I will end our presentation and turn it back to the chair, and we'll be able to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Lee?
I have several questions, but the biggest one is, Eric, you mentioned the public comment period is still open for the EIR?
Yes.
So is it premature to kind of have planning commission approve all these applications?
Well, we've done this before, and it's not part of our process here to have the planning commission make a recommendation on SEQA documents. You do have the document in front, in your package, so you do have, I think, a fairly good idea of what the impacts of the project are. Obviously, you don't have the benefit of all the comments that came in, but it's staff's opinion that for the purposes of making a recommendation to council, because they will have the final EIR, all the comments, all the responses on their desk before they make a decision on the project.
Any other question?
Go ahead and ask other question, and then I'll have...
I'm going to wait until the...
Commissioner Patel, do you have any questions for staff?
No, no. Thank you.
Okay, I have no questions for staff at this time. So at this time, we will open a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Do you have any comments? Do you have any comment cards?
Yes, we do.
Before we get into comment cards, yes, we will listen to the applicant's presentation. Yes. Can I have your name for the record and who you're with?
Mr. Chairman, I'm working as a public retail center, pleased to be employed right. Looking forward to partnering with you on this development of a potential civic center and retail center, and it will bring some uses to this portion of the city, which are currently lacking, and one of the things that I might be having anticipated, there's a bureau of judgment, but it has quite a quality, and we're very happy to be in a looking field right here. Many of your staff have done a great job bringing us to where we are tonight, and work with those craft buildings which, if they're not here going, they're pretty far above that, but we think that's a line where Eastville's, and they move the microphones closer to you, Mark. With these, we think that's a line where Eastville's currently is sophistication. Also, we have amenities such as patio area, this room of sales connected all the facilities to the site, also the civic center portion, the hotel, also linkages to Hamner, now into Silver Lakes. Extensive landscaping, it's that sort of city, the parks, the city minimal, the after parking, and again, a lot of linkages to the rest of the plant, and things like views on the dining area, especially on the Bureau of Restock, looking forward to the Silver Lakes area, view of the hills from the distance. So we think all of this will be a very stand-up project once it's put in the public plan. So having worked with staff, I've anticipated that you work with the staff very closely in our community, it's hard, it's very sculptural, and building is very small, so what we've done, the memory, we have the hand, we added on top of the restoration, the area lighting, the protection, flash, the deodorant, the after, the color changers, we also have high level, and then the slabs, which is the last addition to help break up the northings of the nation, which staff, which might be, so we feel like we've been very pleased with the look, very highly appreciated, completely impactful, satisfactory. And we have an official approval, which by the way, Derek mentioned that the restaurant board, the conditional approval on the liquid alcohol sale to sixty minutes of closing, a mint Montano is here for heroes, and a barrel table, key mechanism has this. We do have the MVP, conditional thirty-five, because it's a partnership where those are supposed to support the city with certain courses, especially the construction. We just might add in condition thirty-five, second line, where it's an off-site improvement, we'd like to add all applicants requiring improvements, including for Steve, we won't be able to control city's timing in certain corners, and we can, we're right now, we will consider if that happens, we would like to add that condition. consider if that happens, we would like to add that condition. So, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. We have a team here, we have a person here as well, if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy.
Mr. Norris, about that addition to that condition, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, in terms of the changes to the conditions, we've discussed those with the applicant, and we're fine with those.
Okay. Commissioner, do you have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lee?
Several questions. I guess the first one is, have you had any discussions, or staff have, has any discussions with Norco on possible access to the park from the site? I know there's a slope issue there, but is, you know, is there possibility of having folks that are on the soccer field come directly to, to the location without driving around and getting to the site?
Currently, currently there is not vehicular access, another violation of current cycle, which will all be on the ham, and then according to construction extension. So, there's no other direct access to Silver Lakes and vehicular. Pedestrian access, currently they have a exit, egress, exit, north side of the property. They do allow cars, but people can't have that location. So, pedestrians can come up the ham and restaurant four, the access to that front door would be very close to that. That would be the best for pedestrians.
I have a question. So, they're gonna use that road that's an exit for cars, and they'll walk up that?
They do today.
They do? Is it delineated separately, or walk on this side, or, because I've driven by it, I don't see it other than, no.
No pedestrian.
The next one, most people don't walk in and have a Silver Lakes, because you're charged per person, if there's a charge, but you drive and walk in. So, most people, if you are a pedestrian, physically can't put up that access.
Okay, I didn't know they charged.
Yeah, they charge.
Okay, wow.
They would charge them to get back in.
Okay.
It's one-time payment, so you can come in, come out, and you don't have to charge.
No, I was just thinking to capture some of the folks that are down there, and capture them, you know, if they can just walk up to a restaurant, to Starbucks, you know, it's an easier access, but if they're charging, you know, that's, that's a different story.
Yeah, it's also, for videos, even if we have eighty-eight rated ramps coming up the slopes there, as a very expensive slope, you know, trying to put up ramps, it'd be a much shorter walk just to go up from there.
Commissioner Lee, that is certainly something that, that we are in discussions with for a future hotel. There are some, as applicant has stated, there are some concerns about the grade between the hotel property, a future hotel property, and Silver Lakes, as well as crossing that drive aisle. And then, of course, Silver Lakes wants to get their compensation per pedestrian. And then, on the flip side, we really don't want people parking up there and impacting our parking. So, it is something that we, we're in discussions with, with a future hotel property, that maybe they could work something out as, for, for folks that are staying at their property and participating in events at Silver Lakes itself. So, it would maybe have to be some kind of a package tied to, to their hotel stay. But at this time, we do not have any concrete commitment from either party.
Great. So, the second question I have is moving towards the north, and there are the two retail buildings there. It's right, it's abutting the residential units there. Was there a thought given to have the buildings front the Schleisman, rather than have, having them closer to the residential areas on the top?
Not from our perspective. Most hotels have tenants, retail tenants like that, related for their work-based made program. So, what we did was provide twenty-foot setback on property line. And we do sit down slope from the houses anywhere five, ten feet, and most of the residents have, I believe, block holes over here, for sixty-five plus or minus. So, there's a built-in plus or minus ten foot up there. And in that twenty-foot landscape, setback, we'd landscape that, select the appropriate tree locations, type of tree, and number of trees there, so that ultimately what a resident might see is a proportion of building, of the landscape.
I don't know if staff has any, received any comments from any of those residents that are applying.
No, we haven't, and I'll just piggyback on what Mr. Manners was saying. It's a little hard to see in this, on the screen here, but there's no vehicular access behind those buildings. So, one advantage of pushing the back is you keep the vehicle activity farther away from the homes. So, those buildings are actually gonna load either from the side or the front. The trucks will park in the parking lot, and they'll hand truck things into the, into the store. So, there, there shouldn't be very much activity going along the backside of the building at all, which we thought was a benefit in terms of putting the least activity possible next to the residences.
I am just concerned, if we can double-check on that, that'll be great, because I'm just concerned that when we actually do construct, that they'll be actually coming out and opposing it because, you know, they didn't, you know, the typical reaction from the residents saying, okay, why are you guys putting a building right next to my house? Now you're blocking my view. You know, I'm looking at the back of a commercial building now, you know, that type of thing. So, I just wanna make sure that we are, we're good with the residents, that, and they fully understand that, that their, that the commercial building is going on there.
Yeah, they did all get notices, so they, they should at least have the opportunity to become aware of what's going on. And, and as Rick mentioned, there is some rather interesting topography, where there's kind of a berm with a wall on top of it, and then you go back down into the backyards. So, but the wall is actually fairly tall.
Commissioner Charleston, do you have any questions?
The only question I had for you guys, Rick, was the slope, the distance between where the soccer field is and where the property is. How much elevation are you pulling off the top of that, or are you not moving, just moving soil around? Or do you have to move and lower that lot considerably? It looks like it from the sidewalk, is why I'm asking.
If I understand your question, Rick, it's a little bit steep. The property line, you see where it brings stops and white stars and like the Silver Lakes. Our property on the low down Silver Lakes side, it is what you see on his property today, which has a twenty-three foot high slope down the number one, and then I'm doing tables as well, these tables down. Our slope starts at that point, a bring, I mean, basically cutting it off and then create our slope up. So, ultimately, we have something like thirty-five feet vertical at the hammer point, a little bit less than the east corner, but it's a pretty significant slope to the property.
And, and my only concern was, is that as the buildings get closer to that, if you look over on the Norco side, where they've had rain over the years, it has caved in, and they had tremendous amount of landscaping there, and they had to go back in later and do a lot of rocking to hold that wall up. So, are you guys trench shoring? Are you putting pylons in? I mean, what are we doing to protect that slope if we're putting structures up there?
Maybe a brief answer, Jason, I'm interested in the specifics. Essentially, we're creating a, we're shooting an off slope to casual, so that's a very important issue. So, if they have that, Jason.
That'd be great, that'd be great, that's great.
If I could interrupt Mr. Vice Chair, just for, in case you need this, this is a street view photograph. So, this is the site here. So, this is actually, this is the ham near front edge. So, the buildings we're talking about will be a little bit farther back here, but you can see kind of, there's a slope up, and then a wall on top of the slope, and then it actually goes down again, I believe, on the other side. So, you've got, you know, between the height of the wall and the height of the slope, you've got probably ten or twelve feet of screening there from the residential side over here. And you can see how that, it's roughly about half as tall as houses, which are about twenty-five feet, so. Just thought that might help give you some feel for what the topography is.
That makes sense. My only concern is that, that is a big slope, and it is pretty steep, and it's not laid-back two to one or four to one. It's, it's a steep slope, it's a one, one and a half to one slope. So, I've, I've done a lot of work with that, and even putting your concrete swale in there at the midway point, that works good for a quarter inch of rain. But if you get heavy rain, it's gonna go right over the edge, you know, it's gonna flow fast, but it's still gonna go over, and there will be damage of some kind. And all I'm thinking is, the Silver Lakes is gonna be mad at you guys for letting that stuff go onto their road that is an actual access road. We've been fortunate so far to not have, for them getting hammered, until we start doing our stuff.
We are, we're, 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 we're opposed to co-conditions, we have to respect that. So, what I have to say as far as being better, it's, it's, it's a little bit hard for our children.
Okay. That's it for me.
Commissioner Patel, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, the northeast corner, I know, is where the Civic Center is potentially proposed, and then, is it, sorry, it's a little, the hotel is on the southeast corner, is that where it's being proposed? Okay. And I guess, just to get it out of the way, on the hours of, of, for the tenant, so for the onsite restaurant, those, it sounds like you're in negotiations to have it be, that it's not spec? You, you have the tenant, you're working with them?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, it shows 1:45 a.m. I don't know if the website says the other locations close at ten, because it's a Wednesday, at least for today. If you just Google it, they close at ten, but the website generally says just close. If I was in the state of Wisconsin, everything closes at four in the morning, but I don't know that we have anything in the city that closes after one. Does even, I mean, any restaurant?
We have twenty-four hour drive-throughs.
Well, I'm, I'm talking in relation to the sale of alcohol.
Oh, alcohol, no, no, we do have some.
Twelve o'clock.
We do have a handful of businesses, if you recall from the Walmart discussion, that actually stay open twenty-four hours a day, but nobody's selling alcohol that late at night.
Isn't it like past midnight? Isn't that kind of, I thought those that close at midnight, the hour ahead, is eleven o'clock?
For onsite sales, right.
Correct.
Right.
So, this sale of alcohol is also for off-site? Or just onsite, it's just onsite?
Just onsite, yes.
Okay, for the restaurant, that's it? Okay, because we're not discussing at this point any of the other, the gas station or anything else?
That's correct.
Okay.
Especially while we're getting, having to address the hours issue. Hi, Nick Montana, commission officials, city officials. Yeah, as far as hours, two o'clock a.m. is the latest you can stay open. We never stay open until that. We're open, but normally what we do during the week is, you know, ten, eleven, something like that, and on Friday and Saturday, we usually give a last call at one a.m. All stores are different, all cities are different. We don't know what this, you know, site will do, but we don't like to handcuff ourselves and say, okay, we're only gonna stay open until eleven o'clock. If, you know, we have, you know, you just said, there's not a lot in Eastvale to go, listen to music, have a drink, relax, have appetizer, and what, you know, we'll say and we'll provide. We also own Roscoe's Deli, Chino Hills, and I know a lot of Eastvale employees, customers, vendors, come from your city to our roadside stores, to our Chino Hills store, even our Fullerton store. So, we're excited that we come into the city, we hope, you know, you guys would love us here. But as far as hours, that would all be determined further down, once we get into it, we can talk about it. Certainly, I think by one a.m., we would be done serving alcohol, just based off the conditional permit of an hour before, you have to be done to hopefully clarify some hours.
Commissioner Patel, if I may add, for, for those of you that may not be familiar, Heroes has a location in Riverside, downtown Riverside. They also own Roscoe's in Chino on Pipeline. So, if you've frequented either of those locations, you kind of have a sense of, of what we're looking at here. And then, they also own a location in Fullerton, downtown Fullerton. So, there is, this is not the same type of establishment that, that we currently have in Eastvale. So, this would be more of a dining and entertainment experience.
Mr. Norris, you wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, just a couple of items. First of all, it was pointed out to me that Buffalo Wildwing closes at two a.m. So, they are open until two. The other issue, we're talking about hours of operation, the restaurant itself is a permitted use, and our commercial zones allow twenty-four hour operations. So, Heroes, if they didn't want to serve alcohol, could stay open twenty-four hours a day. What we can put limits on is the hours in which they sell alcohol. So, we're not really talking about, we're not limiting Nick's hours of operation, we're only limiting the hours in which he can sell alcohol. And the condition doesn't have a specific time, it just says, stop serving an hour before you close. So, that stopping service time would flex along with whatever hours he decides are most appropriate for this restaurant. So, if he decides to close at midnight, he would stop serving at eleven p.m.
So, if he stops, if he closes at three, he could stop serving at two?
No, state law wouldn't let him serve alcohol that late in the evening. And we have, oh, there he is. Lieutenant Martin is here, but he knows a lot more about that than I do.
Okay, well, we won't get into that, it's all right. All right, let's, any other questions for the?
The last one, again, transportation and traffic. The distance, I mean, now, we've got Schleisman right there, but it's, you know, we're only talking three-way, we're not talking a four-way coming out. Based on the distance from that and the next traffic light up at, by the seven-eleven, our ADT, our traffic count, based on the development, were within range?
Yeah, this is going to be studied, Commissioner Patel, and we understand that situation that we have. We have about like one, two, maybe three, or maybe four, within the, within the close distance. And there's going to be a study right here at this entrance, Schleisman is going to be modified the signal. And now, when we have another development to the, to the north between this place and Riverboat, we are studying a possibility of putting a signal in there, and it's going to be a synchron analysis that has to be, should be done. And unfortunately, the situation is with us, what we have now, so we just want to make the best of what we have. It's going to be reviewed and analyzed closely.
Yeah, synchronization has, is got to be top, because if you, you're gonna have between Orange and then Riverboat, I mean, those people can hardly get out now, but when that traffic signal goes in, that will definitely help. And then, all of a sudden, you have Schleisman, and then you've got your ingress, egress, and so, that synchronization is gonna have to be top priority to, to move your traffic.
That's right. We're thinking of putting fiber optics across the project, all the way to, to synchronize the signals, multiple signals together.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I have a few questions. So, pad number one is proposed for the gas station, is that what I'm understanding? And pad number two is potential fast food, is that big enough for a small restaurant, do you think? Or retail building?
Well, right now, pad now, drive-through, because we've got a site, basically no particular tenant, that would be about thirty-five minutes worth.
Without the drive-through, though, you could increase the size of the building and, because you have the parking space for, for a restaurant looks like, maybe? Small restaurant? Just curious.
To answer your question directly, potential guests, our marketing efforts happen here towards drive-throughs, but there's a world, like, which is for the south, we'd love to attend more like that. So many, I feel as hard as I can, actually, in the direction where, like, even while I care, we did, they would not tell the location about the drive-through, so much business is geared at that these days. So that's why our marketing purposes should be for the period of time. And then I can no questions for this, or anything else for the franchise tenants.
Okay, thank you. One more question?
Yeah, one more question on pad two. I just want to hear kind of what's your thought process behind the drive-through is based on the other proposals that you have, because it seemed like it's it's much more higher end, it's much more things that we've been wanting in Eastvale, but, and and all of a sudden, we get a drive-through pad two. So I'm just curious how that came about and what's your thought processes behind that?
Good, my understanding question, our thought process, potential going to drive-through that too?
Yeah.
Well, again, solely in terms of how the market dictating the necessity of the drive-through, so that was number one. The potential types of uses that might come here, shifts to that side of the equation much more than, say, a sit-down restaurant or individual shop tenor of some sort, you know, soccer store, something like that. Those guys are pretty few and far between where drive-throughs, it's a part of our market to. So essentially, that's what drove this work, my understanding.
So just out of curiosity, you know, our city's demographics changing significantly. There's a lot of Asian-Americans moving into our city. Have you reached to any of the Asian businesses? You know, I know we just had Ten Ren open and they're doing very well, so I don't know if you had any opportunity to reach out to the Asian-American community and and the commercial uses that they have and restaurants that they have.
I think we have, like, in particular, our other side of the block, Schleisman, we have Asian-related tenants there, so I'm sure those people are talking, they're respectful and, you know, there's Asian activity.
Okay, so the, thank you very much. Public hearing is still open, do we have any cards?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Oriole Steele and she's speaking with donated time from Josiah Reese.
With what?
She's speaking with donated time.
With donated time, okay.
So she'll be able to speak six minutes.
So she's going to speak si- six minutes worth then?
Yes.
Pardon?
I do have quite a lot to say.
All right, you're on the clock.
Thank you, I'm Oriole Steele, I'm an attorney, I'm a resident and owner, and I'm actually one of owners who is directly affected by this proposed change in zoning and this proposed plan. And I have a number of concerted objections to this plan. First off, in the category of safety concerns, traffic is terrible for tenants here. We currently cannot make a left turn onto the Pacific. In peak hours, even in non-peak hours, it's pretty much mostly impossible. Traffic backs up so badly that it backs up past the fire station, which is taking hazard to the community as a whole. This is obviously a traffic backup past the fire station. If there's an emergency, the fire engines cannot exit and cannot respond to emergencies in a, you know, efficient manner. I know they did talk about synchronization, but since the traffic backs up all the way into New Yorko, that really would not be appropriate because you synchronize with a whole other city, and I don't think that's on the agenda here, so I don't think synchronization would address this traffic issue. We're talking here about two drive-throughs, a hotel, a gas station, retail stores, and other city hall buildings. All of this is a huge addition in traffic to what's already a giant mess. It's already very, very difficult for residents to just drive through there. So I I think it's totally inappropriate here to put this sort of inclusive traffic on this site. I will note that the traffic report, which I did read, which has been compared for the city, I think that's the environmental impact report, traffic portion, it notes that they both at intersections that are impacting their currently operating and efficient level of service. It is, the addition of the common traffic is anticipated to reduce delay, delay during one or both peak hours, five seconds or more, that's just like the study. The study does not need to account for the addition of the ninety-nine percent store or the addition of the other retail on the Alice Corner lot, which also will impact traffic there. The upper part of the study notes that by 2019, the peak hour intersections for our building here indicates that the study area intersections are anticipated to operate at an unacceptable level of service during peak hours. So this is a significant problem that will directly impact the residents here. It will also increase problems with safety for children and the residents in this neighborhood. We have children here in all of these housing houses, houses, lines of property here. These children, you know, where is they located right now? These children like to make their bikes out, they like to ride in the streets, they run around, they play. It's going to be dangerous for them to do that, and I don't think that's appropriate for the city to do that to these children and families. Because also, the free zoning here is, of course, a problem with Eastvale zoning regulations. Eastvale zoning regulations state that zoning amendments shall be renewed under the city council, found, finds a change or to the physical and the general plan goals, policies and implementation program. That's from the city's zoning code. It notes that in order for zoning to be changed, the proposed project must be consistent with the objectives of the general plan, which of course, this is not the general plan designated as the industry residential. It also states most architecture site design and activity must be suitable to the purposes of the building and the cycle and hence structure and neighborhood and community. The addition of these retail buildings here, and especially that gas station right in someone's backyard, you saw that, you saw this review, that gas station, which is proposed there on side one, that is right into someone's backyard. That's totally inappropriate. Those buildings up against those walls, that's someone's backyard. People are going to look out their bedroom windows, look directly into a gas station and look directly into retail buildings. It's not appropriate. It also notes that the, in order for zoning to be changed, the proposed project will not create conflicts with vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian transformation, modes of, or laws of circulation, as I already mentioned. This is going to be a huge impact on traffic and the safety concern. And for residential subdivisions, which this neighbor's onto, subdivision is well integrated in the city's heat work, city's street network, establishes a pedestrian friendly environment, I'm paraphrasing here, but this does not do that. I, I do note that your, the report, the environmental impact report states that based on current conditions, the project will be inconsistent with the existed residential designation. I would not promote the recognition character of the area. This is from the environmental impact report that was compared for this, this project. It states also that consider that the project is such that-
One minute.
Consider the project is such that it will be a general plan and zone change in order to, so it says potentially significant impact would occur. And I think, is that up my three minutes? I'm not going to talk for very long. I also note that the, proposed, the thing that was sent out said that I needed to raise all objections at this hearing, or in order to maintain, to preserve the rights, so I intend to keep talking. Also, this does present problems with the high restrictions of the zoning code. My property is actually located in the, in the corner here where the Civic Center is intended to be built, which will interfere with my property, because my property is actually below the grade of this. Any, any grade of this side will actually interfere with my slope. I have a one-to-one slope in my backyard directly overlooking my pool. So this will directly impact my property. Obviously, it is a problem here with the South Coast Air Quality Management District, which does note that sources create visible emissions, couple days in circulation dust, or-
Thank you very much, your time is up. It's been six minutes now. Thank you.
I believe I still want to talk there because-
You, you each have three minutes.
I'm very sorry, but the form that was sent out to us noted that we could only, if we did not raise objections in this hearing, we would not be able to raise any future time. Therefore, in order to preserve my legal rights to raise objections, I won't get very briefly, take an extra additional minute and keep talking, talk about them.
Your time's up, ma'am.
I'm very sorry that I need to do this.
Ma'am, I will have to have you removed from the hall if you don't stop now and sit down, please.
I want the rest of the evening here.
We need to keep order. Order. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
How do you expect the public to be able to fairly object and keep their objections? If you impose a six-minute, well, three-minute restriction, that you do not have to publicize?
It's on the website, it's standard operating.
Do you think people generate, donate their time?
No, sir. It's, Commissioner, Vice Chairperson Oblea, it is part of our municipal code that states in the code of conduct, the number of minutes that are allotted.
Okay.
And and six minutes. Six minutes is the total maximum.
If someone else would like to read what I have here and leave the risk, I would happily give my hot card.
City Attorney, how, how many times can they pass their time on?
I believe the, the rules within the, the, allow for the donation of one, a total of six minutes, donation of one person's time.
You're at your limit, I'm sorry, ma'am.
However, I will also note that, you know, objections to projects or to items on, on the commission or on a, a planning commission calendar can also be submitted in writing prior to, to meetings as well, which is also included in the notices that go out to residences.
Oh, we might have to, and we were only given notice ten days ago, I did not officially apply to care.
And, and I, and I will also note that the commission is not making any decisions today, that they're only making recommendations to the city council and that any additional, you know, objections can also be raised prior to a decision, you know, being made by a, the city council.
This one over here, we actually like to donate this time to the show, so I would happily step down.
Thank you. And if you have any further comments you need to make, you could attend the city council meeting where this will, will be finalized through the city council, so. This is, we're just giving a recommendation to the city council and they will make the final decision.
I think it's important, citizens, to be heard.
Yes, and you are, you are being heard. So, your time is up, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Our, our next speaker, our next speaker is actually Betty Wu.
And your name is, sir?
My name is Josiah Reese.
Do we have a card for Josiah Reese?
His card indicated that he had donated his time to Oriole.
You donated your time to who?
Uh, Fullerton, the previous speaker.
Okay, well, your time has been used up, I'm sorry, sir, you have to sit down.
It was all my donation from Betty.
You donated your time already, so Betty Wu will come up and speak.
Betty Wu, please.
Thank you. We need, we need to keep order, please. You'll all have, you have your chance to speak?
Yes, I have a chance.
Yes, you had your chance to speak and, and please don't disrupt anymore.
I think I just want to get across a few points, okay? First of all, this gas, new gas station is back to the residential home. It is introducing unsafe elements to all the residents. When accidents like fires, explosions, can be, when you have not, no safe zones or safe buffer zones, you could be, for this law, the immediate residents are at risk, their lives and property is at risk. So I beg all commissioners that consider all these facts before you make recommendations to the council. There is a California code, it's a BPC twenty-three, I can't remember the actual code. It's a BPC twenty-three, seven big nine. This tells that any new business introduced into the residential area has to be suitable for residents, residents, and for the location. That's all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christopher Fulger.
Christopher.
I just had a question regarding the whole interchange project. It was mentioned a while back by Michelle that the whole fifteen interchange thing was part of SCAG's regional transportation plan for sustainable community strategies, but now Eric is saying that the whole interchange project is city policy, so I'd like a little bit of clarification on that.
Okay, thank you very much. You'll address that in a moment, not right now. This is-
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Oscar Alvarez.
Look, I live on Turn River, which, as I can see right now, is on the, I'm recognizing the green areas. Is that going to be all just, you know, fields with, what is, is that a different plan?
I can't address what, right now. We'll, we'll address what you're asking later.
Okay, so-
So go ahead and speak what you want to say.
My, my concern is, right, what a lot of people here are trying to explain, which is the concern for the residents, and ensuring that we have enough of a gap each week what's being built and where we live. I invested all my money into Eastvale and where I live, and I love my city, but I want you guys to protect me, whether it's environmental, traffic, anything that could hurt my kids. I want to ensure that you have my best interest and that I get enough of space, privacy, everything to make, to make sure that the value of my house continues to be created. And that we do continue to grow Eastvale, but you do it the right way. And, you know, you brought up, you know, multicultural, the restaurants that we have here right now, they're Asian or, and I would like to have that, and not just Asian food, but, you know, other food. And drive-through, I'm getting pretty fat myself, I'd like to have all three choices. Every time I go to the web app for Next Door, I also see the demand for trailer builds, and it would be a great addition to here, which I live, to have some change of the common cookie cutter type of location. I would love to be able to just even hop over to the back of my fence or make door if possible with people, just so I could walk back there with my kids and it would potentially be a walkway, so that I can just go to the back instead of hitting my car and increasing traffic. These are things that I think are plausible solutions or things that can be considered by everyone that's responsible for building a better Eastvale. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
That was your last speaker. Okay, Mr. Norris, would you like to address the interchange comment?
Yeah, I think the question was what the city's policy is about the interchange?
Yeah.
We visited this with the council, well, going back to, actually to incorporation, the general plan that we inherited from the county shows a future interchange at Schleisman and I-15. So in about twenty-fourteen, I think it was, Michelle, we took a question to the council, do you want to start even the process of revisiting that policy? And after, after considering that item, the council decided not to do that. So the city's policy remains that there will be a future interchange at Schleisman and I-15. Now, the interchange is almost entirely out of our city, but we note that it's also on the regional transportation master plan, it's on the county's- it's on the county's general plan, Caltrans is anticipating an interchange there, so it remains our policy and it remains a policy of the vast majority of the other agencies who are responsible for making sure that it happens. But that's why, for instance, the D.R. Horton project just west of here has a big wide Schleisman going through it. That's why this project has the road right of way going through it, because we're getting ready for the future. So, without going into too much detail about all the discussion that we had, that's what the outcome of that was.
Thank you, I hope that answers your question. And as far as the green, the green area, that's, go ahead.
Yeah, I apologize if we didn't make that clear enough, so. Yeah, so as I mentioned before, the entire project, and actually the site goes a little bit up here to kind of that pointy corner. So, what we're looking at here is basically the first phase of development. So, the other phases will be whatever happens on this parcel, and that's where we've been talking about potentially another drive-through restaurant, potentially a gas station here, you don't have those applications in front of you tonight, so you're not being asked to make a recommendation or approval on anything on those parcels. Then we get into these areas, and that's where we're showing right now just kind of an interim treatment with some kind of a wildflower mix to keep the soil from eroding. This parcel here is the approximately seven acres that the city would be buying from Lewis to build a civic center complex on. So, that would be a city hall and a library. And that whole design of that center, I think we anticipate is gonna be done in a public process to talk with the residents about what your city hall should look like and come up with a design that we can all be proud of. Then on this parcel here, that's a future application that will come in. The EIR talks about, looks at a hotel here, but we don't have an application in yet for that, so that's something, again, that will be coming to you in the future. But the green here is...
What's the estimated size of that hotel, in rooms?
Between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty-five rooms.
Okay, thank, it's small.
Yes, but again, we don't have an application for that.
Yes, understand.
So, the intent of the green here was not to imply that this is a green field that will stay there forever, it's just, those are areas where we're specifically looking at making sure that we're putting some kind of landscaping down, at least in an interim way. The other two parcels here, we didn't show that, they will have to stabilize the pads until they're ready to develop, but we anticipate they'll come in soon enough, that we didn't need to apply this kind of treatment to them.
Thank you. Any comments?
I'll start.
Before we, let's do this in, before, okay, before we start approving things, we'll do the questions for applicants and staff now and then we're gonna divide this up into a few groups when we start to discuss approval of anything, so. Go ahead, do you have any questions for applicant?
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair, we have no more speakers, so if you want to transition into commission discussion, you should close the public hearing.
Can we still ask the applicant questions during this process?
Yeah, I'll close the public hearing at this time, public hearing is now closed. So, okay, you have questions, Commissioner Lee?
No, not questions, I have comments.
A comment, go ahead.
Okay, so, hmm, it's tough, because first of all, you know, staff knows that my, I am, I'm an adamant supporter of the Schleisman interchange. I think it's necessary for our city, for traffic purposes, for connectivity purposes. I think it's something that we really need in this city, because if you see Limonite and if you have a few of our other interchanges, we have significant issues. So, Schleisman interchange is vital, especially knowing that Schleisman goes all the way through Pine and connects to Chino, and Chino is planning on connecting it to Seventy-One. I think it's very important that we take the regional approach and look at it in that sense. With that said, I think it is vital that this development also occurs in order to move forward in getting that Schleisman interchange. I agree with that, and I am, I'm all for the commercial development out here. That's, you know, I think a lot of the residents have been asking for that for a while, especially when I think the field house went in on the north coast side. But with that said, I think there are significant issues related to the project currently in this state. I think it is quite concerning that we didn't get the full community feedback on the, especially the residents that are abutting the two retail sites, as I mentioned. It's, and Eric, when Eric showed me the picture, I'm more convinced, because it's elevated. So, basically, those folks will be looking at either the top of the retail center or they will be looking over and looking at the roof, basically, of the center. So, I think there is significant room that we can improve, I mean, I think, I don't know, again, I don't know why we can't have the buildings about Schleisman. I think we have examples of that in our city, I think Eastville Marketplace is a good example of that. So, I think it could be very successful. So, I think those are, I think I'm on the side of the residents in that matter, and that I think without the full community vetting, I think we're gonna have issues later on. I think community will come out, especially the ones that are, you know, living right beside it, behind it. I'll be much more comfortable if some of those folks come out and say, that's fine, I signed up for this, I bought this property fully knowing that there's gonna be a retail development in the future. If that's the case, I will fully support whatever proposal the applicant is making. The second part also concerns me is the drive-through. I don't think it fits the overall development of what we're looking for out here. I understand it could be a Panera type, which in that case it'll be good, but it could be a Carl's Jr., it could be a Jack and Bob, I mean, who knows? So, that does, without knowing fully what that is, it does kind of concern me, especially when we're bringing in Hero, which is a welcome sign for Eastville, because we've been wanting restaurants like that. That we're, you know, I think we should continue on attracting those type of restaurants, rather than having a drive-through so that we can attract practically the fast food restaurants. I think those are, those are some of my comments, and I think with that, oh, and another thing is, I think, you know, council hasn't even weighed in on the EIR. I think it's premature for a planning commission to actually approve a development application without fully vetting the EIR process. We haven't seen the EIR comments, we have not seen any comments from the council on any of these developments based on the EIR, and I think it's crucial that we hear from the council and some of the comments that we receive on the EIR. So, for those reasons, I am very concerned and I, that's, I'll leave it at that, but I'll probably recommend to continue it. But, I'll do that later.
Commissioner Charleston, you have comments or questions?
My question is to the applicant. So, Rick, would you approach, please? So, if we look at buildings seven and eight, and then the prospective building one, do we have a footage actually of how far it is from that back wall fence? How far apart are they? Twenty feet. And twenty feet is, that's the size of a backyard at a normal house. I mean, in Eastville it is anyway. You know, we don't have a half acre, we don't have a lot of huge properties like that. So, I would echo what Commissioner Lee said. I'm kind of surprised by the layout of why the buildings wouldn't have been brought forward and then go into the parking lot behind it. You still have the opening there and the sidewalk they can walk down to go in the front door and shop there. You see a lot of places where, you know, in the highest end shopping areas, you go in the back and park and you see the buildings in the front. And, I mean, you guys laid it out, and, you know, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. I know that when we develop the other sites that are in the green right now, the Schleisman will extend to give driveways to everybody a little bit farther. But this is a project we've been waiting for, we have been waiting for restaurants, and I want the residents to know that anybody you can think of that you want it here, we've approached already, and we have approached it hard. The planning department and the city manager has thousands of hours in trying to get the right people to come to our city, and we advertise, we brag about our city, but it's something that we don't control. If they come to us, it's because their marketing department says it's a good thing, not because we say it's a good thing, but if they have one ten miles this way and ten miles that way, they won't come. And it's just a business decision they make. So, I'm almost leaning in agreement with what Commissioner Lee said, is, are we sure that we're doing what's, it's best for the city? I love the project, I want this project bad, but have we designed it so it is forgiving to the neighbors that are the closest to it?
Well, playing with that to your question, the circle was too narrow. Picture that we did push it forward at Parkview and Driveout, immediately adjacent to residents. Personally, I think that's a much worse situation for residents, now you have car traffic, people signing car orders, other shopping centers that have been opened over the years, beer cans that have been on the wall, and that, trash things that collect in the aisles, immediately adjacent to residents. I think this, which provides a buffer, landscape buffer, a distance buffer, and then the placement of significant landscape against buildings, at least the residents have to be pleasant to look at, and they're not worried that they're not getting the way that the residents are coming. Perfect, excellent design to buildings, so I would throw that back, this was set in a plan.
So, I agree, again, I think you could be right, but I wanna hear that from the residents, that are actually behind it. And I haven't heard anything from the residents yet, so I don't know if there was adequate outreach done to them. I mean, we've done the usual, of course, you know, the offers and sending out notices and so forth, but I wanna hear that from the applicant, from the residents.
Thank you, Commissioners, Commissioner Patel, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I suppose. You know, our community was a dairy farm not that long ago. And anytime when you've got a fast-growing city like ours, people come in for various reasons. Some people do their homework, most of the people don't. And, you know, I commend the gentleman who even knew that the fifteen interchange was even supposed to exist. I would probably guess, unfortunately, if I had to, a majority of the subdivision in that area probably didn't even know that that fifteen interchange was gonna happen. And so, you feel bad for the people who bought it because they didn't realize it, but unfortunately, we're not in control of individuals of how much research they do before they buy a house, before they buy a car, anything else. You know, this was meant to be a commercial area, it's off of an interchange, you know, economic development 101, that's how it works in the world. It's kind of a last parcel for us to do it right. It appears because of the shape that it's in, you've got residential and then you've got the large park. And so, to have that, to me, it seems like it would almost be a little, and based on the pictures provided, a little bit more of a walkable area. And so, the drive-throughs, I agree with my fellow commissioners, you know, Starbucks, that's in their DNA. I don't know that other restaurants and food types as much as we want them. We also have tons of drive-throughs in other parts of the city. Being next to our civic center, the public library, the parks, you know, is that this area? I don't know that any sort of mixed use makes sense. To have it be a little bit more functional than, let's go pull up, and I believe pad seven and eight have anywhere from six to eight tenants in each one of those. I, too, am concerned with the setback, I don't know if, is twenty foot the minimum? Or the guideline of the setbacks on pad seven and eight?
Yeah, there's no, there's actually no required setback from the property line, we handle that with the landscape.
Okay. The one thing that I will differ with Commissioner Lee, and I've been on this planning commission from day one, and I purposely do not go to city council meetings, because I don't want the political influence that our elected officials have in trying to approve projects. So, I don't necessarily wanna know what our city council thinks of this. I see our position as being objective, based on our zoning, based on our general plan amendments of, and we make recommendations to city council, and sometimes we do have that authority to approve things, this is not one of them. So, based on all of those, this is a tough project. It has a lot of good things that we want. I've never liked to give blanket CUP approvals. Starbucks, that's an easy one, but the other unknown pads, I'm not so comfortable with. Granted, they do need to come back to us, I don't know in this, in this market, that that's a deal breaker from a sales or leasing aspect, on whether or not that drive-through is pre-approved. But, that's more of my issue on some of these CUPs, that I would actually recommend, if we don't continue this and actually wanna vote on some of this, that we separate the first portion of the development review and do the conditional use permits as separate items. That's all I have.
Thank you, okay, one more?
I have one comment to that, and I wanna make sure we're clear, is that it was zoned medium-density residential. So, if you bought your house there, you thought there were gonna be houses behind you, so I wanna make sure we're clear on that. And even though from the city's aspect, this was better for the project after the field house and the soccer field was built, then, then I think people started changing, thinking it might be better if it were this. So, I don't wanna make the decision based on what we think is best for us only, without, you know, I am surprised, because a lot of times in projects of this size, we do town hall meetings. We've done them on several projects, wherever we wanna do a zone change on the property like that, where, and this is quite the opposite. We've had commercial property with a developer, and as a resident, you need to understand this. As, as a developer, they love homes. They like putting them close together and like selling a lot of houses. So, a lot of times they'll come forward and wanna take commercial property and flip it to residential. And then, that's hard for us to make a decision, because sometimes even the residents want that, because they like to look at what they're living in. But what's best for the community might be residential, based on what's best for tax base for the city and the access to the commercial stuff that might not be in that location. So, this presents a little bit of a different issue, and I wish you would've came forward saying we had a town hall meeting with all the residents that are within a block of this, behind it. Setting it up, you know, at the Eastvale Social Center, where we did several other of them, and I think that would help.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Charleston, if I could remind the commission that there were two residential developers... that there were two residential developers prior to this proposal. And they did do outreach meetings that were held at the Eastvale Community Center. And off the top of my head, I think one was, was it Richland? I'm sorry? It was Lennar and William Lyon Homes on this property. And the unanimous feedback was that it was not supported to have medium-density residential. Excuse me.
Ma'am?
So, this is in part why we now are proposing a commercial use. Also, for all of the homes that are along this property, part of their, if they were the first-time buyer for that property in their CCNRs, they have a disclosure statement, it's called a white paper. We have not pulled the white paper, but you will likely find, we can certainly look that up. These homes, home housing tracts were approved prior to the city's incorporation. But, they are required to disclose as part of their conditions of purchase. This is why there's a three-day right of rescission, that there would be an interchange nearby, within immediate or adjacent to the homes that are being purchased. So, that is not, that is not new. That's been on the books for 20 years.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else?
Thank you. Final comments on my part. We need a commercial development on the southeast end of the city. Everything's on the north, the west side, there's nothing here on this side. We need something that's ideal. I have a question for the applicant. Those landscaping behind the pads, I believe that's six and seven or seven and eight, the two commercials, seven and eight. Are those trees behind there? And how tall are those trees going to supposedly going to grow?
Well, like I mentioned earlier, according to the landscaping plan, probably shows something that is a serious group plant. We'd be more than willing to work with you, local residents, on types of trees on the fastest road. But there's also around two landscaping will be in that area.
So maybe like some trees that would kind of cover the, hide the buildings of some kind for the residents behind it? I know they're up a little higher and they really can't see over the fence unless they're on their second floor, but treetops would be a lot better to look at than rooftops. And so that would be my suggestion for improving that situation. I do believe that those buildings there would be a nice buffer for noise to those residents behind it. It would buffer the noise of the cars parking in the parking lot. I'm not going to talk about that pad one because I have lots of concerns about that one. If they're planning to put a gas station there. But that will become later on, we're going to continue that till our next meeting. And, but this is something that we need here and we've anticipated for a while and we've been looking forward to. I think this could ignite the drive for a interchange on the 15 freeway, which would solve a lot of our traffic problems. I think the Hamner Bridge widening will alleviate a lot of the traffic that we face right now. At least it will going in both directions at that point. I know that athletic field causes a lot of traffic. It's out of our hands. And as a matter of fact, that roadway right there, that intersection at Citrus and Hamner is Norco. It's not Eastvale. So we really don't have too much to say about that. We put our two cents in all the time, but that's about all we can do. So that's my comments. What we're going to do right now is we're going to address the first third of this, or the first three issues. First, we're going to address them one at a time. That's what we're going to need to do. And so, if we have any discussion on the general plan amendment. Commissioners, do we have any discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the general plan amendment from medium-density residential to commercial retail?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
That leads to the next one, the change in zoning from water course and watershed conservation area to, and rural residential to general commercial. Do we have any discussion on this, Commissioners? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to change the zoning? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Now, the tentative parcel map, number 37492. Do we have any discussion on this tentative parcel map? If there's no discussion, do we have a motion?
I have a question. How much, this might be for city attorney. How does the tentative parcel map, the subdivision of the 21 acres? Oh, this is just a continuation. I thought it was two separate items. Never mind flipping the page. We're good.
So, okay, so we have a first and a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
This is for the tentative parcel map. Do we not have a motion?
No, we didn't have a motion.
We didn't have a motion, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
I'm jumping the gun. Into eight parcels. We have a motion, Commissioner Lee? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have first and a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, now for the major development review. And this covers all the buildings that were suggested, the restaurant, the Starbucks, and the two retail centers on the top of the development, the north end of the development. Is this correct?
That's correct, sir. But, from some of the discussion, if you want to make different recommendations on the different buildings, I think you could do that.
Could you clarify that, please?
Well, you've got basically four buildings that you're looking at. The Starbucks, the restaurant, and the two retail buildings. I think if you have different opinions on each one, you could make a different recommendation on each of those buildings.
Okay, so we don't have to group them together? We could approve them separately?
Correct. Well, you're making recommendations to the council.
Recommendations. So this is just a recommendation to city council? We don't, it's not final here with the planning commission?
Yeah, let's just, yeah, clarify that again for the audience. Because I know there are folks out here who want to make sure that they're in the room when it happens, I guess. All of this is a recommendation to the city council. So there'll be another public hearing, another set of notices going out. And that'll, that meeting again is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, June 13th, here in this same venue. That meeting starts at 6:30. So everything you're doing tonight is in the form of a recommendation to council to take final action on all of these items.
Okay, just to clarify, normally, we would, it would be a final action for a major development review from this commission, but we will forward it as a recommendation to city council. So do we have any discussion on major development review for any or all of the buildings? Commissioner Lee? You want to put something down, comment?
Then do you make a motion?
No, do you have any discussion right now on?
How to split this up?
Yeah, so I think it's a good idea to split it up because I think we have a consensus on a couple of the pads there.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. What recommendation would you like to put forth?
That we vote separately?
I know.
Yeah, I would ask the city attorney for help on this. So, if we know we have two of the sites that we're in favor of, and two of the sites that we think there needs to be changes to, and two of the sites that we say, no, we don't want drive-through,
We're not dealing with a drive-through right now.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if there's things we don't agree with, how do we wrap it all into one motion?
But we're going to send it to the city council as a bundle, though, right? With our suggestions for those particular buildings?
No, you can unbundle this into four different recommendations.
Okay, yeah, all right.
For unbundling.
And if we're speaking, I'm sorry, if we're speaking specifically about whether a drive-through should occur on that one pad, you have a separate item regarding that conditional use permit. If you don't agree with that, you would recommend denial of that conditional use permit.
Exactly, all right.
That's E.
So, then we'll handle each development or each building separately? Or let's do the two commercials on the top? You could do those together because they're close together. Do we have any comments or changes you'd like to see on those two buildings? Discussion, Commissioners?
Which pad are we talking about?
Seven and eight. The two north, the buildings on the north end of the development.
For staff, pad seven shows 8,000 square feet. Pad eight is 6,000. Is part of this limiting or recommending the size of, is it one storefront or 12? Or is that not even a consideration? It's the maximum square footage per physical building?
You're approving the buildings as they're shown. The way they're tenanted and divided into individual tenants is really up to the applicant to decide.
Okay, that's what I thought. And also, we are not, parcel one is not?
We're not discussing parcel one?
Pad one is not on the table at this point, nor is?
Pad two.
Pad two.
At this time. So we're talking about pads seven and eight?
Three, four, seven and eight.
We're talking about seven and eight right now?
No, no.
Do you have any concerns with seven and eight?
Seven and eight.
Yes. Anybody, Commissioner Lee, do you have any concerns?
Yes, I have lots of concerns, so I'm going to make a motion. So I'll make a motion to continue the item for pad seven and eight to next meeting. You know, also, direct staff to have the applicant do more outreach to the property owners that are just, you know, right behind the proposed buildings.
You make a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, he made a motion to continue the design review for pads seven and eight for a future meeting, next meeting?
Town hall meetings with the residents?
After, for a meeting after community outreach has been done. Okay, we have a first and a second?
I'll amend my motion, yeah, until the community outreach meeting's done.
Okay. Do I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Nay.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Nay.
Motion fails two to.
Okay, so we still have seven and eight. Do we have another motion?
I have a question for staff on, what additional conditions can be placed, if any, on the development review for pad seven and eight?
Well, your approval here is basically the design of the buildings, the landscaping, the site design. So you can condition any aspect of those. So if you want different architectural treatments, different landscaping, different site plan, you can condition all of those items. So we can't get into the operation of the building, the use of the building, but anything to do with its appearance, its architectural, its aesthetic, any of that is open.
Do we have any, can we just send it to city council with no decision on that, or?
Can we, as a commission, discuss potential conditions?
Sure. I'm going to make a motion.
Well, we're kind of putting our heads together. It's a little unusual.
Okay.
No, I don't feel comfortable either saying yes or no.
I want to make a motion that we continue this till our next committee meeting.
That'd be June 20th?
June 20th. With the hopes that we could get some more letters from the, or feedback from the surrounding community by that time on their feelings towards the, those buildings being that close to their property line.
So you're making a motion or you're asking a question?
I'm making a motion. Do we continue it to the next meeting, which is June 20th?
20th, yes, sir.
Not after a community outreach program, but after the next meeting? That gives them another month?
I'll second that. We can discuss it then.
Can I ask a question before we take a vote?
Sure.
So if we do that, if we don't approve the major development review, can we approve anything else on the bottom of it?
We're going to do each building separately?
Yeah.
The buildings, we can continue with the other ones?
Yeah. If, for instance, you wanted to make a recommendation to approve either of the other buildings, then that would move forward, yes.
Okay.
So we have a first and we have a, do you second it?
Oh, second.
You said, well, I first, I made the motion, he made the first, so...
Okay, my question is, how can we do that if it's going to city council on the 13th?
Well, I think what that would mean, and our city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, they wouldn't consider that part of the project on the 13th. They would consider that then in July, after you've had a chance to deliberate further on the 20th of June and make a recommendation.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Nay.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
Okay, then let's go down to Starbucks. Do we have any discussion on Starbucks? Do we have a motion to approve the major development review for the Starbucks?
I'll make a motion to approve pad three.
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I could jump in really quick. We do have kind of an open discussion item here on that building. As you recall from Kanika's presentation, we have the elevation issue. So we've tried to do what we've heard from the commission, which is to make sure that the buildings themselves look as good as they can. Now, the applicant has given you a drawing which we've just seen tonight.
Are you?
I think our, yes.
Are you happy with this or you want to study this further?
Well, I think staff's opinion would be that we'd like the building to look nice and not hide a less than attractive building behind a row of trees.
Agreed.
So our recommendation would be that you include a condition as we proposed to have them enhance the north elevation and the east elevation of the building in the areas that we're showing in our presentation to make those parts of the building look nicer. We think the landscaping...
Pursuant to agreement from staff?
All this would have to, all this is going to come back to us eventually for plan check and we would review that.
Sorry, sir, it's closed right now, comments are closed.
So I'll amend the motion then to approve pad three with the recommendation from staff
For the enhanced elevations. And I believe there's also, in Kanika, maybe if you want to chime in, there's also the other minor changes to conditions that Mr. Manners mentioned in his presentation, which staff is in favor of. So we just want to clarify if those are part of the motion as well.
Yeah, so I'll add that condition as well.
Thank you.
So you want to say it again one more time for the record?
So I'll make a mo- So I'll make a motion to approve, approve staff recommendation with the changes that staff is recommending for the elevations and then with the condition of approval, addition of the condition of approval.
To amend condition number thirty-five, to include the language as required from the applicant for the frontage improvement?
Yes.
Yes.
And to clarify, this is for pad three?
Yes.
So we have a motion.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
Okay, then down to pad number, the restaurant, that's pad four? Or five?
Four.
Four.
Four. Okay, I see it, four.
Just for clarification, this is not the conditional use permit, but the actual development.
Major development review, yes.
Review for pad four.
That's correct, this is the physical restaurant itself.
Cool. I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendation for pad four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
Okay, we have the conditional use permit for future drive-through on pad two. Do we have any discussion on that?
I think until we have some settlement or agreement on pad seven, eight, I would recommend that we not extend any conditional use permits at this time for pad two.
Are you making a motion? Or just a comment?
It's a comment at this point to my fellow commissioners.
Do we have any other discussion? We have a motion.
I'll make a motion?
To?
To deny the CUP for pad two at this time. Deny or?
Without prejudice?
Uh, yes. Continue until finalization of the development review for, to include pad seven and eight.
Does that make sense?
Can I do that?
Seven and eight are coming back at the next meeting. Do you want to just continue this one to the next meeting?
No.
That's prob-
I didn't agree with that.
Well, we amend it, just make a motion.
Yeah, I'm good.
No, I don't think so. When we know a little bit more about who's coming to the party, then I'm, then I'm happy to. So no, I don't want to continue it.
So what is your motion again?
To deny the CUP for pad two at this time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
Okay, a CUP for a drive-through at the Starbucks on pad? What was that pad that we just said?
Pad three, Starbucks is pad three.
Pad three.
And yours is pad two, right, okay. Pad three. Comment? On conditional use permit for a drive-through on pad three?
Just for clarification, the ingress egress is directly south of pad three? And it looks like the queue is for twelve cars?
Yes. Southeast, enters at southeast, exits at southwest or west of the Starbucks.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, so once again, there is a driveway, a right-in, right-out off of Hamner here, and then the full signalized intersection, which is a little bit north of the screen. So they would come in from that entrance down here and then in through this driveway.
They can't come in through the ingress as well?
They can come in over here off of Hamner and they can come in here.
Okay.
But this whole thing up here would be a continuous curve and landscaping.
And there's twelve cars?
Yes, ma'am.
And where's the menu item? The menu box, what do we call it?
The menu board is here, where we're counting from the first car, and then the pickup window is over here.
And natural exit is to come back down in the egress? Or they can also, that's the only way they can get out?
They'll come down here and then they can either go out here and go north on Hamner.
Uh-huh.
If they want to go south on Hamner, they will have to either go up here.
Go out into the traffic signal.
Go to the signal or come here, go up to Schleisman and then make a left turn.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? To approve the CUP for the drive-through at the Starbucks?
I'll make the motion to approve the CUP.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
So now we have a conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol for the full-service sit-down restaurant on pad four. Discussion? If we have no discussion?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Commissioner Patel?
Tired. Can we just have staff kind of review? My big issue always has been is that we have consistency within the city. So, right now, the ordinance, is it an ordinance or just a condition that all alcohol is stopped one hour before closing time?
That is a condition of approval that the planning commission and/or city council has placed on every other onsite alcohol sale use permit that we've issued. So that, that's a consistent condition that we've imposed.
And it's one hour before closing?
One hour before closing.
And is it ABC alcohol, I don't even know what they stand for, for the people in the audience? ABC is what, alcohol?
Alco, beverage control.
Okay, thank you. Is it that state law that has a two o'clock, if it's not a twenty-four hour designated?
Excuse me. That, that is a state law and that, that's an ABC regulation, that's a state regulation.
State regulation through ABC?
Yes, that's true. For off-site sales like in grocery stores, it's two, two AM. But for restaurants, I believe it's one last call and one fifteen is all alcohol beverages have to be off the tables. If I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Do we have a motion? If there are no further comments, to approve the CUP for alcohol sales at the restaurant?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second?
This is including the standard condition that we have?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
Alright, that puts that one pad, do we have any?
I don't believe you acted on, did you act on one A to formally continue?
To formally continue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're correct, the last item is the additional use permit to continue that item, the conditional use permit for the gas station.
That's easy.
I'll make the motion to continue that item.
Second?
So we have a motion, continue the CUP for the proposed gas station on pad one to, till next meeting? June twentieth? And we have a first and we have a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero.
Thank you. Alright, let's go on.
So just to recap for the commission and the audience.
Please recap.
So there are two items that have been continued to your meeting of June twentieth. That's the building seven and eight and the proposed alcohol use permit for the gas station. So because they were continued to a date certain, there is not a requirement that we re-notice it, but I think we will, given certainly the commission's desire to have more public input. So if we need to, we'll get more envelopes and labels from the applicant and we'll make sure that that noticing happens in a timely manner. On all the other items here, again, just to remind the audience, no final decisions have been made here tonight. Your recommendations are to the council to take these actions as you've recommended them. So either to approve or deny. The council will make the final decision. And with the exception of those items that have been continued to your June twentieth meeting, the council will hold a hearing on June thirteenth on all the other items. So the general plan amendment, the zone change, the tentative parcel map, building three, building four, the use permit on pad two, the use, the use permit for Starbucks and the use permit for alcohol sales at the restaurant. Those will all be considered by the council on June thirteenth.
So they'll, they'll make the final decision on the CUPs also?
They'll make the final decision on the CUPs. And I think we, we didn't get a chance to answer that in the middle of the hearing. Our practice since we began here has been, if we have a bundle of applications where some of them would normally stop at the planning commission, but some of them go on to the council, has always been to take the entire bundle to the council.
Very good.
So that they get the entire package in front of them when they, so that they can make a informed decision. So there will be additional noticing going out for the June twentieth planning commission meeting on those two items. There will also be public noticing going out for the city council hearing on June thirteenth. So that'll be mailed notice, it will be in the newspaper, it'll be publicized on the city's website. If you're not part of our e-notification process, anyone in the audience, go to UCLCA.gov, sign up for e-notification, you'll get all this stuff in your inbox reminding you about all these upcoming meetings, so.
Thank you. Alright, let's go on, six point four, accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. I'll try and be as brief as possible. So Vice Chair, members of the commission, this is a proposed amendment to our zoning code on the topic of accessory dwelling units. And we'll talk, first of all, about just what those are. Accessory dwelling units are, in kind of the common language, granny flats, in-law apartments. Our code currently calls them secondary dwelling units. They're not a guest house, a guest house doesn't have a kitchen. They have a kitchen, they can be set up for independent living, they can be rented, but they can't be sold because they're always on the same lot as a house. So you can't sell them individually from the house. And they're generally, because they're smaller than a house, more affordable than a house. So what's happened recently, and this is actually going back years and years, the state of California continues to take actions which affect local agencies. They want to improve the supply of affordable housing. We know there's a housing crisis statewide with affordability. This is part of how the state legislature has determined is appropriate to try and increase that supply by making it easier to approve accessory dwelling units. And they're doing that by making it more of a ministerial, kind of a staff-level process, just kind of checking off the boxes as opposed to deliberate a process in front of the planning commission here. So the state in 2016 adopted two different laws, they were signing the law by the governor that mandated that we do things with our zoning code, which we're doing now. So these changes would bring us into compliance with state law. So just a little bit of discussion about what a dwelling unit is. A dwelling unit is, as defined in our code, it's a building or part of a building used by one family and containing one kitchen. So it's the kitchen that makes it a dwelling unit, it's a stove that makes it a kitchen. I'll show you what that means in a second. And that's as opposed to a guest home that doesn't have a kitchen. So you can have a guest home for, you know, family, friends, whatever, who come to visit. They're not cooking in there. You're also not renting it because it's not set up for independent living. So there's a number of different ways to do an accessory dwelling unit. You can do it inside your existing home, so either, you know, in this case, the attic or in an Eastville situation, you could turn the second floor of a two-story home into an accessory dwelling unit. You could turn, if you have a basement like the shows, you could turn that into an accessory dwelling unit. You can attach it to the main home, or you can make a detached one and build something entirely new. And that's really up to who owns the property to decide. Now, something that's not an accessory dwelling unit, at least the way they're currently built, are the next-gen homes. Now, that's a trademarked name that Lennar uses. There's a whole tract of those built over in Eastville, over on Helman. And this is a, it's either one of their site plans in that tract or one very similar to it. And what they're doing here is they've shown this blue area is that kind of what they call a home within a home. That has a separate area, has a bedroom, kitchen, little living room and so on, and what they call a kitchenette. Now, because these were done before this whole accessory dwelling unit thing came up and when you could only have one kitchen, they built something that looks like this. Looks like a kitchen, but you notice the one thing that's missing on there? It doesn't have a stove.
Stove.
So we actually went in the models here when they were selling them and they had a little poster up on the counter there that said, here's all the things you can cook without a stove. You can put a hot plate in, you can put a microwave, you can put a countertop, convection oven, and they said, all the stuff you can cook without a stove. So they were going right up to the line of creating a second dwelling unit without creating a second dwelling unit. Now, with these proposed changes, if they're implemented, they could very easily now come back in and say, I'm turning this into an accessory dwelling unit by adding a stove into that countertop somewhere. So that's really briefly kind of the difference between a guest home and accessory dwelling unit and this kind of thing. So, very briefly, and Chad Harrington, our Assistant City Attorney, wrote the ordinance and did a fine job of that and he can answer all the minutia, but in general terms, here's what the ordinance does. First of all, and state law requires this, we no longer call them second dwelling units, we call them accessory dwelling units, that's the new term for these. We can require one parking space for an accessory dwelling unit with some exceptions. If you're within a certain distance of a transit stop or a car-share location like a Zipcar. If you're in an area where you need a parking permit, but they're not available, you can't require parking. If you're in a historic area, anyway, there's exceptions that we're going to apply in very limited situations in Eastville. But generally, one new parking space for that unit, so, yeah.
Does that include, is that a bus stop? Would that be a transit?
A bus stop would count.
That would count?
In a certain radius of a bus stop.
Okay.
The parking for that accessory dwelling unit does not need to be covered and that's different from our standard requirement, which is for, if you have a single-family home, you need two covered parking spaces. So if you create an accessory dwelling unit, we can get one more parking space, it doesn't have to be covered.
So driveway would count?
Could be in the driveway.
Or side yard?
Could be in the side yard, yeah.
I thought side yard with setbacks.
They could use a setback.
If you had enough room, you'd have to have enough room to park there.
Because wouldn't that be, what about, or is that more of a CCR where there's subdivisions that don't allow like RV parking? So to me, that's the same thing. You couldn't use a side yard.
If you're in an HOA, I think that would trump this. You wouldn't, you simply wouldn't be able to.
Then you wouldn't be able to if your HOA doesn't allow.
Your HOA might not even allow you to create an accessory dwelling unit. So that trumps all of this. Accessory dwellings will be subject to the same setbacks, height limits, et cetera, as the primary residence. If you're converting, say, your second story to an accessory dwelling unit or a part of your first floor or whatever, you can't require a new water or sewer connection. That's in state law, but you, if you're building a- But if you're building a brand-new accessory dwelling unit, like that example of the one, say, in the backyard, you can charge a reasonable cost to connect to water and sewer because they probably get their own meter. And that's something that they'll have to work out with JCSD because that's their fees. And the last item here is that the minimum lot size, which we have currently in our code, right now, to do an accessory dwelling, you need a 12,000 square foot lot. That limit goes away.
So, there's no minimum size?
There's no minimum lot size.
Lot size.
And then on the size...
But your setbacks are going to create that limitation.
Right. And then in terms of the size of the unit itself, if you're an attached accessory dwelling unit, and that would be, you know, either the second floor or, you know, adding on, it can only be 50% of the size of the main home up to 1,200 square feet. So, if you add, say, a 2,000 square foot home, your accessory dwelling unit could only be 1,000 square feet. If you had a 3,000 square foot home, which is the typical Eastville size, you could build 1,200 square feet because you couldn't get to 50%. If it's detached, there's no, it's not tied to the primary home, it's whatever you want to build up to 1,200 square feet. So, that's kind of all the mechanical stuff. Now, the last item that we wanted to talk about is, as written, and this is really something we can do or can't do. The regulations require that the property owner has to live, the person who owns that land, has to live either in the main home or the accessory dwelling unit. Has to be on-site. That's different than the current code. The current code would say, if you had a lot big enough, for instance, and you built an accessory dwelling unit under our current standards, you'd have to live in the main home. You couldn't build an accessory dwelling and move into it and rent out the new home. So, that's a change. Now, in the staff report, we're going to some pros and cons about that requirement. On the pro side, it encourages having an owner there on the property to ensure the upkeep. On the con side, just from the standpoint of implementing that and keeping track of it, it just becomes a record-keeping issue. We need to now start a database of all the accessory dwelling units. We need to check on some kind of regular basis to make sure that the property owner is still living there. If, for instance, Daryl does this, builds an accessory dwelling unit in his backyard and rents that out to Josh, but then Daryl gets transferred to Florida for a new job. So, he sells the house. He would have to sell the house to someone who's going to live there. Or if he sold it to someone who didn't want to live there, he'd have to evict Josh. Because now, you wouldn't have the resident living on the property. Those are the downsides that we see. But it's really...
You're thinking that's a downside that you'd have that requirement?
Well, in Daryl's case, for instance, if he's trying to sell that house, then he's limit, he would have to disclose to whoever's buying it that you need to live here or evict Josh when you buy the house.
I think that's a pro. Because if in my street, I have 10 houses and every single person decides to do that, we already have issues with 10 fam, you know, four families and 10 people living there. You could, in essence, instead of having 10 houses, you would end up having 20 rental properties. I think it's okay that you require at least the owner lives in one of the two. I don't see that as a con.
And you can certainly do that. We just wanted to highlight some of the issues.
No, you're right.
I mean, with, we all, just with the rental and that we've got now...
But the issue that Eric explained is, is that if you were renting it to somebody you don't know, and that's not what they were designed for originally. It was just what the original slide said. It was for a relative, a child, a kid, somebody that you were trying to help out.
Grandparents, that's right.
Well, not in moral accordance, they look.
Right, that's exactly right.
Continue if you, are you done?
Well, I think that concludes our presentation. So, our recommendation is that you make a recommendation to adopt those changes. And really, the only, the only issue that we saw as a decision point was on that residency issue. The rest of it is pretty much being done to comply with state law, so.
Well, that was my only question. Is it all right if I ask a question?
Go right ahead, yes.
My only question was, is what control do we have of any of this? I mean, it's state law, so.
Not much. It was drafted to, you know, comply with the new state regulations. As Eric pointed out, there is this issue of whether or not the owner lives in the primary or secondary or, you know, secondary or accessory dwelling unit. You know, you have some, the city has some control over that, as to whether or not they want to make that a requirement. Otherwise, the ordinance was drafted in order to comply with the state law minimums.
So, the only, we could actually make the city ordinance the portion where you must live in the primary dwelling.
You know, any one of the dwellings.
Yeah, you could retain, so, right now, the current secondary dwelling unit ordinance that the city currently has requires the owner to live in the primary. The ordinance that we've drafted says that they have to live in either the primary or the secondary. But neither is a requirement of state law. You could also say that the owner isn't required to, or have no requirement at all as to whether or not the owner lives in either or. So, that is...
So, I like the way you drafted it.
The either or?
Yeah.
As drafted, right now, it allows the owner to live in either the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and the reason for the flexibility is, I think you're seeing a trend, especially with folks aging, where they don't need the 3,000 square foot house anymore. So, you build an accessory dwelling unit, move into that, and then the main unit becomes your income property that becomes your nest egg. So, that's a reason for flexibility.
So, it's a state, yeah. So, it's a state law that they're only allowed, we're only allowed to condition the project to have one parking, right?
Correct. Under the new state law guidelines, an accessory dwelling unit can only be required to put or have one parking space in the prior, or in the current iteration of the ordinance. It's based on how many bedrooms are in the accessory dwelling unit or in the secondary dwelling unit. Under the state law provisions, it's limited to one per unit, not bedrooms.
So, I'm sorry, that fed into my question.
Wait, are you done yet?
So, basically, the driveway considers it as one. So, I think for Eastville, we won't have any problem with that one.
So, the public street cannot be considered a parking place?
No, no, no.
That's okay with me.
Has to be on-site. Although they are allowed to park tandem, so one behind the other. And it doesn't, it's not required to be covered parking. And under the, those lists of exceptions that Eric had pointed out, you know, if you're close to a public area of public transportation or a ride-share location, that parking requirement can be eliminated. So, there are some, you know, exceptions to that one parking space requirement, but otherwise, it's going to be limited to one.
So, if you have a garage and you fit two cars in there and require for two covered, if you have room in front of that garage and the driveway, that will count as that one extra parking spot?
That can count as an extra parking spot.
And how much, what's the footage between the primary house and the detached accessory unit? What's the minimum distance?
I'm going to say six feet, but Keneke's going to see if I'm right. While she's looking up that, one other thing that may come up. If you have a single-family home right now with two-car garage and you convert the two-car garage into an accessory dwelling unit, because you're talking about parking now for the main unit, you'd have to replace those two spaces with two covered spaces. And that becomes hard to do on most of our lots because there's not room in the backyard and the front yard, it's in the setback, and you can't have required parking for the main unit and the setback. So, that's just another wrinkle in here. It makes it difficult to convert garages into second dwelling units, even, or accessory dwelling units, even under these standards.
That's a good thing.
So, is there a maximum number of automobiles per housing unit that can park on the street?
No. No, and we see that, you know, in various areas around town where you've got mom and dad and the kids. You have five or six cars. You can park on a public street, you can only park there for 72 hours, but...
How about like nine cars? No, seriously. So, and this kind of gets with this of, don't we have limitations as to how many family units or separate families can live within one household? Is it three?
No.
There's no limit?
There's no limit. You can't limit that. Now, that's federal case law has decided that.
Unless it's operating as like a boarding facility or something like that.
But a single-family home could have four different people from four different, who are not related.
No, but let's, just let's say you have a five-bedroom home and there's three families and each three family has four people. So, now you have 12 people living within a, within a five-bedroom home and has nine cars or more. No, there's no limit, okay?
You're shooting a dead horse.
No, I'm trying to clarify because I have neighbors coming to me complaining about one of the neighbors who has, you know, they take up half the block.
Okay, well, let's move this along because we're not talking about...
The last question on limitations is what if that house is being used partially for business purposes? So, now the business registration, does that, is, you know, how does that come into play? Because there's another house down the street, they're having business, I mean, we're not sure anybody really lives there.
You're not allowed to operate a business inside of an accessory dwelling unit.
Not in the accessory dwelling, but what about the primary residence? If they're registered.
If they are registered with the city of Eastville for a business registration, we do look at the type of use.
Okay.
There are not supposed to be customers going round the clock. So, if that is what is occurring, this would be something that needs to be referred to code enforcement.
Code enforcement, okay. That's what I told my neighbors.
Further investigation, right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on accessory dwelling unit ordinance? If we do not, do we have a motion? Oh, wait, do we have a consensus on the...
I don't think we took public comment on it either.
Oh, is this a hearing also? Oh, well, then, let's open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any cards on the issue?
No, we do not.
Okay. The public hearing is closed. And how do, consensus on the owner must live on either one of those units? We're all in agreement? As written? Okay, we'll stay.
That's how it's written now.
That's how it's written now, yes.
So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
As written?
Accessible dwelling unit ordinance as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have first and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
All right, way to go. Presentation? No, we don't have any. The city staff report?
Doesn't.
No? Okay.
Just a quick staff report for the commission. We do have an additional staff person that will be joining us shortly. We have gone through the recruitment process for a finance director. So, the city will have a permanent finance director for the first time in approximately four years. I, we've made an offer. I would like to tell you the name, but I think we're going to wait till we have acceptance. But I think you'll be very pleased with who the person is and should be starting in two weeks.
She?
He, he.
Oh, he, oh, he.
Will be starting in about two weeks. He's a CPA, many years of experience, and I believe some of you will know him.
Excellent.
Also, do want to share that we do have another code enforcement officer that has joined the team. So, Christopher DeHessa. You have, to kind of give you a rundown, you now have the senior code enforcement officer, that's Mario. You have Christopher DeHessa that is a code enforcement officer as well. And then you have Jared Perez that is a code enforcement technician. He has passed his PC 832 and does have his beginning and intermediate certification as code enforcement officer. So, you now have three working the field. We also have a, another code enforcement technician that works part-time either on Saturday or Sunday, mostly doing temporary sign in the public right-of-way enforcement. So, you now have code enforcement services seven days a week.
Very good.
So, once we get past the training hurdle and a bit of a backlog in code cases, you should start to see more responsiveness. Also, I know that some of the commissioners have brought to our attention an increase in illegal dumping. So, we're working hard to address some of the concerns. It is a bit of a moving target because as soon as we address it in one area, it kind of seems to pop its ugly head somewhere else. So, Semner and Belgrave has been a location that I believe one or more of the commissioners has pointed out in the past. We have installed a camera in the area, have removed approximately a ton of debris from that area in the last week. And there will be some fencing going off, going up pretty soon. So, we appreciate your patience as we work through that, but it was a little bit complicated. You've got multiple agencies with jurisdiction there. And then lastly, I would like to share with the commissioners that Assistant City Manager Brian Jones and myself will be headed to the International Council of Shopping Center Convention in Las Vegas Sunday through Tuesday evening. We'll be back Wednesday morning for staff meeting and council meeting. So, keep your fingers crossed that we meet lots of interesting and desired tenants for the city of Eastville. And I do want to commend staff. The sit-down restaurant at the Polopolis property is something that we've been working on for probably eight months to a year. So, it's nice to see that come to fruition, yes.
I just have a question. Where do you fit all these new employees in that city hall?
You know, we're sitting on each other's laps.
I don't want to hear it.
We're taking conference calls in your car. So, it is very tight quarters, but we're making it work right now. It's, it is a bit like sardines at city hall. We are also expanding city hall into the suite next door where Stiles for Less used to be. So...
All right, that'll kind of ease the pressure a little bit, huh?
Yeah, so that will give us a little bit more, a little bit more space. And with that build-out, I'm really happy to announce that we'll be moving the meetings over there as well. So, that's the objective, to have kind of a flex space where we have some additional elbow room for staff positions. And then the city council and commission chambers will be at that location.
Oh, nice.
So, that means you'll have air conditioning on a regular basis.
Parking will be tight.
Shouldn't be too bad.
I don't think it'll be too bad.
Then we could all go catch a movie after the movie.
Yeah, there's a lot of parking spaces in that shopping center, but you'll be, at least be able to grab a bite to eat before, before the meetings if that's so desired.
All right, very good.
Yeah, or go to Buffalo Wild Wings afterwards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, commissioners' comments, communications? Commissioner Lee?
So, I have a comment. I think it's kind of related to our item today. I was actually really glad that other commissioners also agreed on that drive-through and we denied it. But I'm kind of seeing more and more of these drive-through applications in, and it is kind of concerning. So, you know, last thing I want to do is like limit like private development to occur and so forth in our city. But we don't, at the same time, we don't want to become a city where we're known for having 50, 60 fast-food restaurants. So, I think, I think it's important that, and it's also important to empower the staff. So, I think, I think it's important that, and it's also important to empower the staff. I think today what we did was allow staff to push back on the development, developers in some way, if there are too many drive-throughs and fast-food restaurants proposed. So, I think, I think going forward, it'll be nice to see, I don't know what the solution is, how do we stop, or how do we, again, there are many issues that are concerning, but, and I don't know what the solution would be, but maybe something that staff can do is, I would like to see at least a count of how many fast-food and drive-throughs we have in the city. I don't want to-
To what establishments?
Yeah, I mean, basically, a rundown of exactly what we have, so that we know, you know what we're dealing with. At the same time, you know, like, you know, there are some state data out there comparing fast-food restaurants to healthy establishments and so forth, and I think, so it'll be nice to find out what we have, and also what's coming down the pipeline. So, I think if we can kind of get a sense of that, I think from there, we can move on to maybe having a possible city-wide community meeting, and, and I just want to hear like what the community thinks. Do they, are they okay with continuing on and getting more drive-throughs in our city? Or, you know, are they concerned about it? You know, I, there was one gentleman today that mentioned, okay, you know, I, you know, it is concerning that we're ahead of getting so many drive-throughs and fast-food restaurants, so I think, I've been hearing it from a lot of the community members. I know Michelle's been hearing it a lot with like Trader Joe's, Spouts, and all these other grocery stores that we're not getting, and then she explained exactly why we're not, but I think it'll, it's important also to kind of bolster that thought of, you know, having that community backing of, you know, let's, let's try to work this in a better format, so that we can actually limit those.
Let me, Mr. Johnson?
I would echo pretty much what he said. Kneke, I thought you did a good job putting the red, you know, highlighted areas on the buildings that we need to do a little more to, because we do push a lot of our developers, and sometimes you hear that we're easy. I don't think we're easy.
Really?
I hear that. And what I hear is, what I believe is that the staff does a pretty good job of setting it up, so we don't deny a lot of stuff.
Well, but denying-
No, I'm telling you that they say, if you bring it in front of us, it's going to get approved. I've heard that more than once.
Oh, you're kidding.
Because we don't deny that much, but the reality is, I think we beat it up enough, and they give in enough to where we say, "Okay." But it's, it's tough when we have developers like we had tonight that are very entwined with our city, and I can remember other projects that we've fought, kicked back a little on, and they were not happy. They thought it was unfair of us, but they still did what we wanted. So, I think we need to remember that, that we still hold a pretty big hammer when it comes to what we'll accept or not. But I thought tonight was fairly detailed, it was more detailed than I thought it was going to be, and, you know, people came out stronger than most things we've had to deal with in a long time. You know, if it's a cell phone tower, they come out. It's Walmart, they come out. But for stuff like this, this was, this was a pretty big crowd tonight. So, thank you, staff, for, Larry, you did a good job-
Thank you.
-controlling that, that was tough.
Carol, do you have anything to say?
The only thing is, maybe we do approve a lot of things, but I also feel our city is proactive, and really, it's because staff beats them up and fine-tunes it, so by the time it comes to us, so I, I like to think, I like that we're able to approve them and not get into this, excuse me, pissing match with them. That's, that's not the place. It's to be enclosed doors, where staff and, and, you know, city council has set forth their direction, and we've got fabulous staff. I mean, I, you guys make our job mostly easy.
I agree.
So, no, thanks, I thought all around it was-
Not always, but mostly.
But Larry, I will say, if, tonight was a tough night.
Yes, it was, thank you.
You can fly, Howard.
Just a couple of things. The maintenance landscaping on, around the streets, they're still not picking up the trash. I know we talked about that a couple of months ago, and they were supposed to address that, JCSD, but I've been walking, I walk regularly, and I still see trash all over the place. And right after they manicured the landscaping, and you go back and they're still got trash, they don't pick up the trash, so that, and another, I just want to announce that my youngest son, Joshua, who was an intern here, he was promoted to First Lieutenant last month in the Marine Corps, so he's now First Lieutenant, Joshua. So, with that said, let's adjourn this meeting to June 20th, 6 o'clock. Be here-